Hey, welcome, everybody. We called this informal session together. We welcome all the folks out in the gallery today. We got a bunch of stuff that we can be talking about. Mr. Duhany, can you get the ball rolling for us?
So, Mr. Mayor, the first presentation will be a presentation from Odyssey about the festival that's going to be in April. And I think Nancy Hellman from our CVB, our CVB director is going to give a quick introduction, and the Odyssey folks will come and give an overview of their event and festival.
Welcome.
Welcome. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany, Mr. Harmeyer, Sean Buford, and Bennett Zier from Odyssey, Virginia are here today to update council on the programming for the weekend of April 26 through 28 and the Odyssey Oceanfront Concerts. Events will take place in the 24th and 17th Street Parks and on the sand at 31st Street. Sean, Bennett, thank you so much for the update.
Okay, good. Great, great. Welcome, Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everybody, and thank you again for working with us. Thank you for all your interest, and at the same time, we really appreciate all the input you've been giving us. So, we thought it's best right now as we're closing in that Sean Buford, who is our executive vice president, share with you today exactly where we're at and be able to answer any and all questions. But I think what you're going to see is pretty exciting. Sean?
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Nice to see everyone. This is tougher for me to read because I'm used to being closer to the reading source, but I'm going to play off that screen back there. This coming April, August, April 26 through 28, we're very excited again to be putting together the Odyssey Oceanfront Concert. I wanted to give you a couple of reasons again why we are here, because we have the ability to unlock extraordinary results in a short period of time. Because we reach over 1.2 million people each week, we deliver epic results for our local, national, and regional marketing partners. We reach more people weekly than watch the late local news combined. In addition to that, we have 28 music branded radio stations that we're going to put forward to help deliver the message about the concerts coming up. Odyssey is, this is what we do. So, we're happy to add the Odyssey Oceanfront Festival or Oceanfront Concerts to our National Festival tempo of events. So, what's most important is we're going to create a great immersive experience for everyone to be a part of. We started with the premise of developing a strategy of Virginia's own, grown, and known, and as promised, we've held true to that statement. Together, we're going to promote this primarily in our markets of Norfolk and Richmond, where we reach 2.1 million people each week and deliver over 700,000 social media followers across these 10 brands. But in addition to that, we're also going to utilize the markets of Washington DC, Baltimore, New York City, Buffalo, Rochester, Pittsburgh, and Philadelphia to drive more consumers to the market. But what's most important that we talk about today is the footprint that we'll be participating in come April 26. We're going to activate across three different locations, two of those locations being the park at 17th Street and 24th Street. The most important thing about 17th Street, that's where you're going to be able to experience everything that's coming out of the Virginia Beach area in terms of the arts, from the visual arts to the performing arts. Everything that is new and creative and being cultivated in our community is going to be on display for three days at 17th Street. At 24th Street, where we're going to activate from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM each day is something that we lovingly refer to as DJ All Day, where we'll take a different level of tempo and experience through each day of the festival and activate with DJs, many of them local, regional, and national in scope, participating at these three locations. And then finally, there's the large scale development that we put together at the Oceanfront at 31st Street, where we're going to have national performing acts, people that are right for the audience that are coming. And for this room only, because it's just a secret room, I'd like to share with you just a couple of people that'll be performing at the Odyssey Oceanfront Festival, Oceanfront Concert, April 26 through 28. Some of these people are at the top of their craft right now. I'll give you two names to start with. One is a very popular hip hop artist and musician named T. Grizzly. What's fascinating about T. Grizzly is he has over 2 million people that watch him play video games on a platform called Twitch, which is very connected to the younger set that'll be arriving here. And then the other, another name I'll share with you today is a hip hop impresario named Juicy J, who's had major number one hits and has traveled the world representing the brand, and we're happy to have him at the beach to celebrate with us the Odyssey Oceanfront This is a rendition of how we're going to market with the Odyssey Oceanfront Concerts. This is, this breathes everything into what we had hoped. It creates a vision. It's temperate, it's expressive, and it's cool. Everything that the city of Virginia Beach is. With that, we're happy to add the Odyssey Oceanfront Concerts to the Odyssey portfolio of live events in 2024. But we certainly can take any questions that you may have.
Any questions at this point? Okay, Sabrina, then.
Who are your local artists?
Well, the local artists are actually being, this is one of the greatest things that we were allowed to do. Because of what we're structuring, we've gone to market with a couple of people who will be curating those platforms for us. They're making the selections because they're much better at it than we would ever be making a determination of what's popular and in play now. So, through the curation process, we're going to, we have two organizing groups that are putting talent together for those stages. They're basically going to handle every activation at 17th Street and 24th Street. Nice group of young people that was really excited to give an opportunity to work with us as we help develop the customer-facing opportunities for the visitors that come here.
Will you be able to provide people to our side?
We certainly would. We have a memorandum of understanding that is actually waiting to be executed, and once we did that, it would be fair to do that.
Would I be able to?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely, Councilman Mooton.
Just one more.
Sure.
With that, will you be paying those local artists?
Everyone, everyone that works gets paid. It's the principle of what we do. It's one of the great things about being local in the community is that we have to run into these people, and we want them to have a good quality of life like we are able to enjoy. So, yes, everyone that performs gets paid.
And if I may ask? Bennett, we need you to.
He was doing so well, I didn't want to really interrupt.
No, but if you have any artists or people that you know in the community that you'd like us to showcase, please call Sean directly, and we're happy to do that because it's a lot of time to fill, and we have it filled. But if you know of artists that you'd like, sure, call us. It's not a, it's not a closed door. It's supposed to be a celebration, okay? So, please, if you have names, let us know who they are.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're sourcing, we are sourcing names all over and every, every different event. I had, I was at the, I was at the United Negro College Fund's Mayor's Mass Ball just a couple of weeks ago, and I was able to connect with three people that we have now added to our roster for the event.
That's good to know.
Well, yeah, no, that's what was so important for us, to come out of the gate with our vision of Virginia's own, grown, and known, because we are responsible for growing these artists into known entities, and we're cultivating it from the bottom up so that when they have an opportunity to thrive, that they'll be, they'll be remembering fondly their hometown.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. You mentioned T. Grizzly and Juicy J.
Correct.
Which is from my era.
Okay.
High school Juicy J.
Yes.
We do understand that Something in the Water, although this is not the equivalent, it's not trying to mirror its own concert, did bring in a variety of genres, but we've, the two you mentioned are hip hop. What assurances does the public have that there will be a diverse group of artists?
Well, I can address that by saying the assurance is that the public has, we're going to put on the best show for the population that is coming. We have great insights throughout, from not only the historical references that have been made by council and the other details, but some of our market research allows us to be pretty confident that we can program the show for the maximum benefit of the consumer.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Worthen, then Amelia.
Thank Odyssey for your presentation and your work, and look forward to the weekend. Just one quick question. To me, what jumps out is the lack of a real headline name, like it's not Something in the Water or Beach It, but, and I don't think it should be Odyssey, but.
You're saying the lack, not the lack of a headline name, but the lack of, a lack of a branded name?
Right, yes.
Yeah. I think that that's something that has always been under consideration. It's more of a matter of timing and being able to come to market with something that is fully expressive of what the opportunity allows.
Worthen, also, this was about activation, trying to, we went into this with Patrick and with the mayor, and we were very clear, as I think Chris stated, we weren't trying to be Something in the Water. We never raised our hands to do that. What we want to do is we want to, we want to activate locally where we can, and the idea of bringing in a headliner was just something that was, if it fell in our lap, we would.
Creating the name, the name of the show. It's not a branded name of the show.
Right. And what we hope to do is to please everybody so that over time, it becomes an annual event that we can continue to build on.
So, just the naming, the naming of it is a matter of trial, and we didn't have enough runway to build its own brand. So, we went with a brand that we know is proven and can deliver against the demo, which is Odyssey.
Hey, Amelia.
Yes, thank you again for stepping in to fill that void at this time.
Thank you very much, Doctor.
You're here, Odyssey. We know you're coming.
Yes, ma'am.
People are getting excited.
Yes, they are.
You are a walk the talk, because I saw you at the UNCF, and you came up busy talking about the Odyssey. Other Serami, what's he talking about? And that's word, you know, word of mouth.
Well, we have the biggest mouth in Hampton Roads, if you didn't notice, and so it's a pleasure to represent it. Like I tell you, it's, and for me, it's really special to be able to activate in the parks because one of the, one of the things, one of the glorious things that make the city of Virginia Beach an amazingly livable place is our public parks, along with music education. Sorry. I'm sorry, wrong meeting. I thought this was the other meeting, but music education is important.
Music professor, keep talking.
I know you, that's why I chose you to look at that one. And we need to protect the arts and music, but the park systems in Virginia Beach are amazing. So, for us to be able to utilize these resources and in a way that involves the community and gives a chance for the artists that are from here to perform here so that they can grow and come back here, that's really an exciting part of what we do as we broadcast live from Virginia Beach every day.
Okay, anyone else with that worth?
Just one last question, thank you, Mayor. Tickets, how do we get tickets?
Ah, you'll be very excited to know that tickets will go on sale very, very soon. We're going to be executing a public release of more, in addition to the names that I share with you in private. We're going to, we're going to be, we're going to be offering a much more formal release later in the week that'll have more details on how to purchase tickets, how people can be involved with supporting the city of Virginia Beach and its efforts to continue to be the, a great place to live, work, and thrive.
We're really good at this.
Worthen, you got to be.
You got to come up here, Bennett.
Worthen, we're really good at this because all our, we have all these websites that people go to, and they'll be able to buy tickets on all our websites.
Yeah. You'll be able to, actually, you'll be able to go to Odyssey, Odyssey Oceanfront.
Another website for you.
You'll actually be able to go to OdysseyOceanfrontConcerts.com and be able to purchase tickets very shortly. If you go there today or tonight, tomorrow, you'll see a countdown to the Odyssey Oceanfront Concerts taking place on April 26 through 28 with the updated art curating right now. So.
Okay, Josh. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, Bennett, team, great job.
Thanks.
I know you, you were given the task of creating something at an expedited pace at a very critical weekend where you helped us fill, fill a gap, letting us at the oceanfront. So, so my thanks to you and your team for the work. Question, follow-up on country member Reddick's question about tickets. Do you have any anticipated points for those tickets?
It's, this is a, it's still moving, but it's a very affordable ticket. It's a very affordable ticket. And I should, one of the things that I didn't address in the activations at 17th Street and 24th Street is that all of those activations are free daily. So, there, that's, those are not a ticketed area. So, even those people that are limited budget and scope can still enjoy the beach and its programming, that those tickets are free. The only aspects of, that will cost is the concert itself at 31st Street, and that ticket price would be very, it's the best ticket price value that you'll see all summer.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. So, there was a specific question.
Yes.
Just asked, and we kind of got a broad answer because affordable in this city means a little bit different depending on who you're asking. So, I want to be more specific because taxpayers have put for $750,000 cash to Odyssey for the first time. We've never done that before in this term, in this type of agreement. And so, can you, for the public that has put forth tax dollars to support your organization that, as you know in my comments, at first were not very supportive, given the history and kind of the current state of affairs of affiliated organizations? What is the bottom line? Can you give us a range? Because people that are not wealthy, affluent, have the budget.
Sure.
And so, young people traveling here can't wait to get here and find out the tickets 500. So, can you give us a range, sir?
All right, Chris.
Thank you.
A two-day ticket will not be more, will be less than $100, okay? And, and so, the ticket prices you're probably looking at, and we're still working it out because we're finalizing the acts and the money and the negotiation. But we're, I'll tell you what we're hoping to do, and we'll do the best we can, okay? Is we're hoping that a ticket would be for one day less than $50, and for two days, less than $100, pretty much, maybe even less than that if we can, you know, figure out what we're doing. But again, which is important to direct to a lot of the questions, we are aiming this at the students. That's where we're going, and that was kind of what we were charged with when we were brought here initially to say, give something to activate so that the students have something to do and something fun to do. So, price will be very affordable based upon the fact that they'll be under $100. I'm sure there's a VIP option.
Certainly upgrade. Councilman Taylor, you can upgrade at your, at your discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Sabrina.
So, I did ask about the local artists, and I know when Something in the Water came, everyone, businesses, artists wanted to be a part of the process. What about our local businesses? How are they being integrated into the process?
Very, very importantly, we are a local business, and so, we start there, but we start there by, because we help local businesses every day. Now, we've met with the hoteliers and the restaurateurs, and we have an upcoming meeting with the Atlantic Avenue Association. We've talked to, we've talked to a number of different retailers across the entire city who are all looking at this as a very positive experience. We're putting together some opportunity for them to drive traffic to their locations if they choose, if they choose to, and I'm excited to work with these grassroots marketing initiatives. There's going to be a directory that we're going to put together that will exist online, where we'll try and point them in the direction of different things to participate in while they're not, while they're here, and give them reasons to come back to enjoy the arts that they don't get to see there by sending them off to Moca and other places. And so, we're trying to give them a full and rich experience of the city of Virginia Beach, not just on the boardwalk, but in areas like Town Center and Pembroke and Kempsville as well.
Great.
There's lots to see and do here in Virginia Beach. All you have to do is come on out.
The last follow-up to that with regard to the 750,000 cash, have you started marketing already?
We will, we will be, so, I will tell you that our marketing campaign will, will parallel the release of the lineup. So, 7:00 AM around Friday morning, there'll be some communication about who the lineup is, where we're performing, where people can buy tickets, and then our marketing will begin in earnest.
And will, in your reporting, will you give us a report of where that 750 went? So that when we're asked by residents and citizens where it went, we can tell them.
I believe that's Nancy's question. So, now, I'm done.
Yes, ma'am. Our team has already made contact with Odyssey as far as the meet-by portion of our contractual arrangement, and yes, we'll be getting data, data, data that we'll be able to share back.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, anyone else? I'll tell you what, I think this is going to be a great launch to the summer season that we're going to have, and recently, we just had data come back that these types of investments at the oceanfront are really paying significant benefits to us. And not only that, it's a destination for, you know, people to come, and all different, all the different type of venues that we have out there are really going to, you know, enhance things. And the thing is, I think one thing we really have to underscore, this is a local company that is going to be able to deliver a big product for us. So, I just want to thank you all for coming, and, you know, thank, it's nice working with you. Good way to start a summer. Show us, show us this weekend, or we should go out and be a part of that.
I don't know how to size this, so. I'll leave those there. All right. All right, guys, thank you. And thank you for working so well with us.
Okay. Bennett, you got to speak in the, sorry about that. I'm reading. And next time, we'll mic you up, okay? Okay, next up, Mr. Duhany.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, our partners in Hollywood. With Virginia Moca and Virginia Wesleyan, we're going to come and give us some exciting news about their possible relocation to build a new building on Virginia Wesleyan site. We'll be joined by Ms. Allison Byrne, interim director, and also Dr. Scott Miller and others from Moca and Virginia Wesleyan. So, at this time, Allison, I think the floor is yours.
Thank you, City Manager Duhany. Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, city council members. My name is Nicole Nadehorsky, and I'm the board chair at Virginia Moca, and I wanted to personally thank you for your flexibility in rescheduling our formal session a few weeks ago due to the resignation of our director and CEO, Gary Ryan. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we thank Ms. Ryan for her many accomplishments, including shepherding the museum through COVID-19, rebranding the museum, nurturing a world-class staff and building an organization that brings locally relevant and nationally resonant exhibitions to our community, and finally, most recently, championing the museum's move to the campus of Virginia Wesleyan University. The museum is stronger because of her excellent work, but she will be missed. However, the board has not skipped a beat. We quickly named Allison Byrne the interim director. Ms. Byrne is a familiar face to many of you. She's a proven and thoughtful leader who is well-regarded in the local community and the broader art world. Her more than 20 years of stewardship at Virginia Moca ensures the museum will have continuity and leadership through this next phase of its evolution. Ms. Byrne is a graduate of the National College of Art in Dublin, from Art and Design, excuse me, in Dublin, Ireland, and holds a Masters of Arts in Humanities with a concentration in art history from Old Dominion University. You will hear from Ms. Byrne shortly on the incredible accomplishments of the museum over the last two years and our very bright future at the campus of Virginia Wesleyan. I would also like to take a moment to introduce our partners and co-presenters today, Dr. Scott Miller, president of Virginia Wesleyan University, and Michael Schnetzker of Timeoff and Moss, lead architect on the new museum on the campus of VWU. You will hear from each of them a bit later in our presentation. And finally, to share some good news with you, yesterday, Truly Matthews, our Director of Education and Engagement, was awarded the prestigious Virginia Museum Educator of the Year Award by the Virginia Association of Museums. Congratulations to Truly. To say that I'm incredibly proud of the work the team does at Virginia Moca each day is an understatement. We are a better community because of Virginia Moca, and I thank each of you for your continued support. And with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Byrne.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole, the Honorable Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of city council. Thank you so much for having us today to update you on Virginia Moca's recent momentum and exciting future plans. I'm here first and foremost to say thank you. Your unwavering support, both financial and in-kind contributions, is vital to our mission. We are incredibly grateful for your collaboration. Last month, we unveiled our new exhibition, Journeys to Nature's Underworld, featuring internationally renowned artists and environmental advocates, Mark Dion and Alexis Rockman. Addressing environmental sustainability, a priority for Virginia Beach and our partners, this exhibition reflects our commitments to this crucial topic and one we revisit with different artists and programs periodically. One of the most rewarding aspects of our work is fostering connections between contemporary artists and our vibrant Virginia Beach community. Take Mark Dion, for instance. During his week-long stay while installing his exhibition, he actively engaged with our city. He went birding, enjoyed our restaurants and businesses, and made positive and lasting connections with our artistic community. This culminated in a well-attended members opening, a testament to the excitement generated by his presence here in the city. And here's an email we received from Mark the morning after the opening with my favorite line, "My thanks for opening up a new window in my world and introducing me to the richness of Virginia Beach. Mark's genuine appreciation resonated deeply with our team at Virginia Moca. Having an internationally renowned artist like Mark, experiencing connect with Virginia Beach in such a positive way was really meaningful to us. Collaborating with our K through 12 partners is a cornerstone of Virginia Moca's work. Mark and Alexis regularly give talks around the world, but we wanted to do something that was special to Virginia Moca. Partnering with the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Environmental Studies Program, we facilitated an onstage conversation between these talented students you see and the artists. Callie and Salome interviewed the artists with expertise and confidence. Their insightful interviews available on YouTube to watch and plays daily in our auditorium for our visitors to see. You'll also see that our visitor numbers continue to grow. On the left-hand side, you'll see that we previously tracked our exhibition and program attendance together until about 2021. Since then, we've specifically measured museum visitors, excluding school tours, classes, programs, and events, and this graph demonstrates our steady growth, and we're on track to reach our goal for the year. Virginia Moca serves not only the residents of Virginia Beach, but also the broader region. In fact, 60% of our visitors live outside of Virginia Beach, and they come seeking the unique art and education experiences we offer. The strong attendance not only signifies the community's engagement with art, but also translate into economic benefit for our region. A recent study shown on the screen found that for every dollar invested in Virginia Moca, economic activity in Hampton Roads increases by more than $3. Next up, in July, we're excited to present Maiden VA, our prestigious biennial juried exhibition, and this year, it's bigger than ever. We're offering more gallery space, a renowned jury, and a new $10,000 Good Artist Prize, a life-changing award for an artist. We received applications from nearly 700 artists from all across the state. Professional development for these artists is vital and a major focus for us. For many, this is their first museum exhibition, and we provide guidance on everything we can, from loan agreements to packing and handling artwork. Additionally, we offer many more paid opportunities to teach classes, participate in public programs, and record audio tours for the exhibition. Finally, we are thrilled to continue presenting exceptional art experiences for our community in our current location, while we're diligently. in our current location while we're diligently planning for the future home of Virginia Moca. I would like to hand it over to Dr. Scott Miller to tell you more about our move to Virginia Wesleyan.
Welcome, Scott.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the invitation to come and share information with you today. First, before I get to the subject at hand, I do want to thank Nancy for that wonderful presentation. Bennett, Sean, and Nancy and Odyssey have been great partners to Virginia Wesleyan, and we are also joining in some sponsorship of that production, so we're excited about it. And they have also been our outsourced firm for digital marketing communications for the campus, so they've been, been good friends. I also want to thank you and Nancy for the Virginia Beach Sports Center and them hosting the NCAA Division III Indoor Track and Field National Championship over this past weekend. Louise McCleary, the NCAA vice president, attended the event after visiting Virginia Wesleyan the day before, and she and they agreed that it was a first-class venue and a first-class event. So, we thank you and they thank you as well. But today, I'm here to discuss the Virginia Wesleyan University-Virginia Moca relationship. First, I want to thank Nicole as the board chair, Allison as the acting director, Scott Duncan, the immediate past board chair, Bruce Berlin, the current vice chair, for being outstanding partners throughout this process. It gives me great optimism for the future. We announced the collaboration on the construction of a state-of-the-art facility to be built on the university's Virginia Beach campus last July, connecting arts and education in a way previously not explored in Virginia Beach. Integrating Virginia Moca into the Virginia Wesleyan University campus is appropriate for an institution holding the Carnegie Classification of National Liberal Arts College. You've heard much lately about ODU being classified as a research one. We are categorized as a national liberal arts college by the Carnegie Classification. There is no other institution of this prestigious classification east of Richmond. It will enhance the reputation of a local museum seeking a more regional, statewide, and national reputation, and will be another synergistic partnership that the city of Virginia Beach can champion for primary and secondary schools, tourists, and the entire coastal Virginia community. Both organizations have appointed integration teams to facilitate this collaboration as seamlessly as possible. Located in the hearts complex, arts complex of the university, which is the epicenter of Hampton Roads, the new facility will serve as a hub for creativity and innovation, fostering artistic expression and offering an immersive experience for students and visitors alike. The new 35,000-square-foot building will be located in a four-building hub of the campus to be called the David R. Goode Arts Complex, prominently visible from Wesleyan Drive, a heavily-traveled roadway with approximately 31,000 cars per day. The facility will be adjacent to the Susan S. Goode Fine and Performing Arts Center, affinity housing for art students in Mary Eggleston Hall, and Susan Beverley Hall, which is the original art building on campus. A recent report had over 200,000 cars per day passing our I-64 interchange. Mayor Dyer and Councilmember Ross Hammond frequently speak of Wesleyan Drive being one of the gateways to the city. Bringing this project to fruition will be an asset to both in realizing that goal. The central location of Virginia Wesleyan's campus will make V.Moca even more accessible, allowing the museum to better connect with the cultural and educational fabric of the entire Hampton Roads area. According to one report, the new location places V.Moca within 1.6 million people within a 35-mile radius, 1.6 million people within a 35-mile radius. The current location only has 468,000 people within that same 35-mile radius. More people also means more schools are located within that radius, opening up a realm of possibilities for greater access for schoolchildren in Virginia Beach and beyond. Four other like-minded museums will now be within that 35-mile radius as well. The funding for the project has been generously provided by local legends of education and the arts, Jane Batten, Joan Brock, and Susan and David Goode. Most in our community recognize those names as primary philanthropists who've elevated Virginia Wesleyan University to the National Liberal Arts Classification. No doubt, this project will elevate the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art as well. With 33 years of experience as a college president across four liberal arts institutions, I've had the privilege of engaging with affiliated campus-based museums on each campus, gaining firsthand knowledge and a deep appreciation for the vast opportunities and benefits that they offer. This unique perspective has enriched my understanding and advocacy for these cultural institutions. I have no reservations at all about the immense value this integration brings to Virginia Wesleyan University, to the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art, and the Virginia Beach community, recognizing it as a pivotal element in fostering a rich cultural and educational landscape. Let me now introduce Michael Schnexer of Timeoff and Moss, our longtime preferred architect. Michael's been our preferred architect, and Horegon has been our preferred contractor. I think Horegon's latest total was 21 different projects over the last seven years. Michael.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Miller. I'm here to walk you through briefly where the building design stands right now. Caleb, you can, thank you. So, what we're seeing right now is the front facade of the building, rather stoic facade, sensitive to the context of campus. The front facade here is comprised of raw metal, glass, and precast concrete. The rear of the building has brick and metal panel. It, again, sort of, sensitive to the context of the campus and the Susan Goode building next door. You'll see in the front elevation, there's a play of transparency between trying to make the space in the building feel accessible to the public while protecting the art. The veil element, that we're calling it across the facade, is this raw metal facade that is perforated in the center. And as day turns to night, the sort of transparency will flip, going from rather opaque to increasingly transparent as the lights inside take over. Go to the next slide. Thank you. This is a site plan overhead, so Wesleyan Drive is off the page or off the screen to the north. University Drive, where the guardhouse is, is just off the screen to the top. And then, we would come down that crossover Smith Drive, which is the loop road on campus, into the newly-created entry drive for the arts campus. You can see there bordered by the darker green. That would enter into the parking lot that already exists for Goode. It would be a shared parking lot between Goode and Moca. Moca is, Goode is there labeled on the right, Moca labeled on the bottom in the center. Moca has a plaza out to the front that they will use for events that spill out of the lobby and event space, and a lawn over to the west that will be used for other outdoor events. This is the first-floor plan, which is primarily gallery space in the mid-blue. The atrium and event space is the lobby that can be subdivided into purple, and then the pale blue is art-receiving and handling, sort of back-of-house spaces. Upstairs, we have classrooms in the orange-yellow, and then admin in the red. So, the classrooms will be open to the public for classes and instructional things. The admin will be mostly in back-of-house.
Any questions? Michael.
Well, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for the positive impact that you make on the Virginia Beach community, not only the arts and culture and educational communities of Virginia Beach, but just for our community in general. I think it's a source of excitement that we have such a vibrant arts institution, educational and art institution in the city of Virginia Beach. And the fact that you are all working to create enhancements to that institution is a credit to you and to your vision. And I also think to the city of Virginia Beach as a broader community that we're in a position to value and prioritize and support an institution such as Virginia Moca. I also want to really make a comment to thank the donors who have stepped up very generously to make this project possible for Virginia Moca and for Virginia Wesleyan, and thank them for their many different ways in which they've had a positive impact on our community through their very generous and visionary philanthropy. I think it's important that the city, I don't have a question, if you didn't notice.
I was wondering, what are your thoughts?
No question here, but, but I think, but I, but I think it's important that as a, as a city organization, the city of Virginia Beach, as a, that we continue to prioritize support and, but more importantly, partnership with Virginia Moca. These are fine people who are involved in the staff and the board of both Wesleyan and Virginia Moca, and they're working together to be responsive to the community needs and to create a new chapter in this very important organization's future for Virginia Beach. Also want to take a moment to thank Allison Byrne for stepping up as the interim director in this moment, the entire board of trustees of Virginia Moca, and Dr. Miller, who I should say, along with Councilmember Ross Hammond, was just recognized by the United Negro College Fund for his work and Virginia Wesleyan's work to promote, support HBCUs and educational opportunities for minority students. And I think that just speaks to the, kind of, the spirit in which all of these things are unfolding. It's, it's really fantastic and very much appreciated. So, I'm excited about the future, two great institutions coming together, and I have every expectation the city will continue to board in partnership. Oh, and by the way, we just had, as was noted, the Virginia Association of Museums Conference is happening as we speak here in Virginia Beach, and it'll be exciting when they come back in the future that we can host them in this new building.
Can't say no, right? You said it publicly, so yes.
Hey, Rosemary and Worth.
Thank you for being here to give us this presentation. It was a very exciting time in the life and the new chapter of, of Moca. And the good news is, you're still going to be in Virginia Beach, in District Four.
Yes, I was going to say.
District Four. District Four. Her district during the campaign was kind of the sleeper, and then she comes on board and we see all the cool things that are happening in District Four. But this is, it's a real exciting time. I did have a question. The exhibit space in the current Moca, I'm sure this one's going to be larger. Can you give me a percentage of how much larger it might be?
It's about 20% larger. We are really excited because Michael's designed wonderful galleries that we are working hand-in-hand to figure out we have kind of maximum usage, how we can have one very large space or two smaller spaces, and it's really secure per AAM standards, so we can be an accredited museum.
Because I think that was always, in my mind anyway, a big need of Moca to have, because you're looking and drinking and all of this wonderful stuff, and you say, where's the rest of it?
Yes.
We need to see more.
The other piece that's grown is our art lab, which is our interactive hands-on space. That's growing by about 70%, which we're really excited about. Our visitors love that, and we're bringing it to the forefront of the new space.
Well, we thank you for bringing the art and culture to our wonderful city.
Thank you.
And you're worth.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, Nicole, Dr. Miller, Allison, congratulations, Michael, and your effort. Here, I just have a comment, question, and then a question or comment is, can you go back to the attendance slide, the Virginia Moca attendance slide? Because I want to make the observation again of the increase, and that's through COVID. Look at that big, large increase, and that's exhibitions only. And so, Gary Ryan, the former director, I think, had a lot to do with that increase, and your exhibitions have pushed, you pushed the envelope up for that, so congratulate you on that. That's really important. And then, secondly, in regards to the move, I am aware that the board did evaluate many sites around the city, especially the resort in the vibe. And Nicole, or someone can speak to the reasons. And one big reason why, and I think the partnership with Virginia Wesleyan, I think it's a great concept and great idea, and for both Virginia Wesleyan and for Virginia Moca, for what Dr. Miller said. But what were the reasons why? There's 25 million reasons why, $25 million why it's a good partnership with Virginia Wesleyan, and that's probably the difference. Why did it not end up in the vibe or remain in the resort?
So, that is a huge difference. Thank you, Councilwoman Remick. So, $25 million is the largest gift we'll have ever received. And so, for that, we will certainly, that's $25 million reasons why. But we did, for about three years, look at other options in the vibe and in other places in the city of Virginia Beach. And this partnership allows us to partner with an education institution, and we're seeing that museums across the country are partnering with education institutions. So, this was almost a no-brainer. And then, to have the Goode, the Goodes, Jane Batten and Joan Brock step in and say, we would support this on the campus of Virginia Wesleyan, you know, under much scrutiny, you know, much scrutiny by the board, looking at all the options, we felt this was the best, best place for us. Scott.
There are natural synergies that go with it as well. I think the question that was asked about exhibition space, you notice that in the new facility, there's not an auditorium. That's because the building right next door is the Goode Center with a large auditorium. There's also right behind it Beverly Hall, which is a black box theater, an additional space. So, pulling this facility together into an arts complex on the campus provides an aesthetically beautiful, easy in-and-out, a larger population to be served in a more direct way, and their efficiencies of operations. You know, one of the donors is Jane Batten, and she has endowed our wonderful Batten Honors College. She foresees an opportunity for students that are interested in the arts in the Honors College to have funded work opportunities, to do internships, to earn credit, to do the work and learn program right there, easily accessible, don't have to drive 12 miles down the road. The proximity to other museums in the area make a number of synergies with the other museums possible. It's just a win-win all the way around.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, Amelia, then Josh.
You're standing there. Thank you so much. Dr. Miller, thank each of you, and Allison back there, and the architect. This is a win-win. There is synergy. It's happening in District Four. One of the things Dr. Miller mentioned to me was, we're working on a cultural corridor, which is what this is. Because where he is, where we're going to put the Virginia African-American Culture Center, it's a walk away. It is also in the middle of over five historic African-American communities.
That is correct.
Who may not have known about Moca, but now their excitement is going because they can see their history, they can see the contemporary, they can see the environmental. It's a lot of a win-win all around. So, I salute, I welcome this partnership, and I know it's going to thrive because you build it, what happens? They come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, everybody, and thank you very much for a wonderful presentation and the vision forward. I was really happy to hear Councilmember Remick solicit some of the conversation out of you about the synergies that are able to be attained. And Dr. Miller, something that you said just was staggering to me, the expanded access. 1.6 million people within, what, a 35-mile drive?
35 miles.
So, our region is roughly 1.7 million people. So, you've just placed this, this facility within, within reach to our entire region and in partnership and collaboration with the many other institutions that exist. And I think that is really, really important to emphasize and say again, because like Councilwoman Ross Hammond just said, this is, this is a gateway to our community. And, and my, my thanks and acknowledgement to those, and the audience as well, who are, you know, from Virginia Moca and from Virginia Wesleyan. So, thank you for your hard work and your vision.
Thank you. Jennifer.
So, I'm thinking about, I graduated Virginia Wesleyan in 2008, and none of this was there. And so, to see how the, like, everything we're seeing on the screen, I don't think was there. And so to see how the, like, everything we're seeing on the screen, I don't think was there. So seeing how the institution has expanded is quite incredible, and now that I'm in education, thinking about all the learning opportunities too. So if there is any, you know, I know when there's change, there can be resistance, there can be concern, but I see so much value and so much benefit for so many different stakeholders. So not only the community, more access from various parts of the city, but also for students who, you know, colleges shouldn't be so isolated, but you have learning opportunities right there on campus, performers, artists, that can connect with these folks, who will hopefully one day be part of our workforce and be in our community, and it's just such a rich culture. So I love to see this kind of collaboration, and I'm really excited to see it go forward.
We've also had the discussion with Virginia Beach Public Schools about making sure that those school buses keep rolling in the front of the campus and into the parking lot at the new location. They're excited about it as well. And you know, there are two campus-based academies at Virginia Wesleyan, Chesapeake Bay Academy, Tidewater Collegiate Academy. Next door is Norfolk Academy. Discussions with them, as well as Lake Taylor, about the possibilities of this location. So it's ideal every way around. We're excited about it.
Hey, anyone else?
I forgot to mention the other institutions. We have Sandler, we have Besider. Guess what district you're in? So am I blessed?
You are.
I guess District One's no longer the epicenter. How could I? Hey, you got to catch up, Hux. Hey, but listen, Dr. Miller, thank you so much. You know, I tell you what, we've always had a cordial relationship with Virginia Wesleyan, even when they had a Norfolk address. But since you have come...
But we've always been in Virginia Beach.
I know. But, you know, since you came, Dr. Miller, you have been a game changer in your advocacy and being a champion of Virginia Beach and being one of the best cheerleaders we ever had. And it has been a very fruitful collaboration between us. You know, we get a lot of students that come from other areas, and a lot of the students actually stay here. And, but once again, what you have brought to the table, and, you know, Mr. Belucci is a champion of the arts, and this is such a significant step in the right direction. Yeah, granted, we're sad to see Moca weave the oceanfront, but it's still going to be in Virginia Beach and parts of access that it'd be far more accessible to so many people. And the thing, one of the benefits of the arts is for people to be able to enjoy them, to get to them, you know, close to major highway networks and everything. But once again, your stellar reputation at Virginia Wesleyan, you know, just continues to grow and grow and grow under your leadership.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on.
All overview of the housing study recommendations that we shared back with you back in January or February. The goal today is to limit the recommendation towards specific areas where you would like to authorize staff to start working on. It's not to vote on any of the policies or any of the strategies or any recommendations, but to simply let us know from what we're recommending as the areas of focus, if you guys are okay with those areas of focus for us to move forward.
Okay, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of council. I'm glad to be here today, and I am going to go over just a few things about the housing study. As you remember, I was here before you in January, and so our goals today are a little bit different as a deputy, excuse me, as City Manager Duhaney just said. Today, we're going to talk about the proposed strategies from Virginia Center of Housing Research and Housing Forward, and I'm going to highlight some staff recommendations and prioritize the opportunities for completed staff work. There is, again, I will reiterate, no policy decision requested today. So I wanted to just briefly go over how we got here. So if you remember, in November of 2022, the council approved the ordinance to fund the study. In January to June, Virginia Center for Housing Research did some data analysis, they did community stakeholder engagement. Then in August, in September of last year, there were two briefings, two months back-to-back on the policy and the program recommendations from both Housing Forward and Virginia Center of Housing Research. And then January, as I mentioned earlier, we brought the final report to you. So today, I wanted to share really briefly about the emerging housing challenges in Virginia Beach, based on what the study told us. And so there are three areas, the most pressing and the most critical need in Virginia Beach is the lack of affordable housing units that are affordable to those persons that are at very low household, which is people that are at 50% or below of the area median income. The study indicated this is the greatest critical need that we have in our city. Secondly, of course, there are units for above-average earners that create unique pressures for productively priced housing stock. And what that really means is that people who can afford actually more cannot find units, which means they are actually underhoused. And then thirdly, there's limited ownership opportunities for low and moderate income households due to the tightening market here. We all know that, as the study said, it used to, we used to have houses on the market for about 90 days, and now the average is about 30 days. So in light of that, there were eight proposed policy solutions. Three were strategic priorities, and that was in areas where the city could build capacity to make significant strides, but it is going to require planning and also resource investment. Excuse me, thank you. Second is easy wins. Easy wins actually are fewer decision points on the part of the city, and it could, it could show that we did some pilot programs and had some quick successes. And then thirdly is background work, and this takes advantage of the current and the upcoming efforts, not only here in the state, but also across the United States, to improve affordable housing, and it could help us in our approach to affordability here in the city. So I, the staff and I are recommending these in priority, and so there are four different areas that we are suggesting that might be good for prioritization at this time. Again, let me reiterate, this is to go back, do some completed staff work, come back to you at a later time and report out. So the first one is to develop a housing, city-managed housing trust fund. If you remember, a housing trust fund is a vehicle to provide capital to address diverse housing needs. Could be loans for affordable rental development, it could be grants even for homelessness services. It's a flexible, locally-generated fund, and it would help supplement the limited federal and state resources that we have to us here in the City of Virginia Beach. There are various legal structures and governance models that we could look at in Virginia Beach to create our own. So we are suggesting an initial funding of $5 million of city funding, and then a potential securing of an additional $5 million to match this funding. The target funding would be for the highest need that we just talked about, which is to the development of affordable rental housing for very low households at or below 50% AMI. And so the long-term goal would be to preserve about 100, excuse me, 1,000 affordable rental units over the next five years that funded at $10 million. That would be about $10,000 a unit. And so I went back and looked at data, and the data, we, in Virginia Beach, during the last 10 years, we built 6,000, or not we, in the city, 6,872 multifamily affordable units were built. Of those, only 13% were affordable for people at 60% AMI or above. So as you can see, there's a real disparity there of the number of units built, and yet the number of affordable units that were built in the last 10 years. So this could help us to increase that. And then finally, we would consider researching, we would not consider, we would actually work on researching sources of a dedicated funding for the housing trust fund going forward to look at other sources to help the city maybe add to this funding source in the future. So the second priority is to use VBDA to fund large-scale mixed-use, mixed-income development. And so, as you know, the VBDA leverages its powers here in the city, and they could help support affordable housing and complement our efforts to boost business diversity and tourism. While it traditionally works on economic development alone, if a strategic expansion into housing, especially mixed-use and mixed-income developments, not only aligns with our need for affordable housing, but the growing state support and recognition of housing's role in economic vitality. And so staff could meet with VBDA, vice chair and chair, and the economic development director to talk about their interest, and then we could submit a report, a city council report after the initial meetings to council members. Third, we're looking to design an education campaign to incorporate into successful community engagement, and I wanted to point out that that corresponds already to your focused action plan initiative 2.13, which indicates to develop and implement a public education and outreach campaign to increase understanding of the need for affordable housing. Also, it coordinates with the Communications on Housing Matters campaign that we've already launched, and that campaign is working to inform the public on key aspects and address affordable housing misconceptions. And then finally, we are working on a, staff is working on a benchmark quiz in April to gauge current public understanding of affordability, and we will repeat this one year after the campaigns to assess the campaign's effectiveness of that education campaign. And then strategy four, or excuse me, priority four, is to research opportunities to simplify and streamline the permitting and review process. Again, this corresponds to a focus action plan initiative 2.8 that the city council has already determined is one of your priorities, which indicates that you want to continue to evaluate and improve permit application, review, and approval process to advance policy goals and streamline customer experiences while maintaining necessary regulatory oversight. What we found out during the group sessions and the stakeholder engagement during the study was that many that were interviewed said that administrative challenges and slowdowns add cost to residential development in the City of Virginia Beach. And planning has dedicated staff to a development process, but we would like to collaborate with the planning department to fast-track and gripe-tape these best practices to make lower housing options easier and faster to build. This also, we would work with the planning department after the comprehensive plan is done, because they're getting some input through the comprehensive plan on this issue as well. So additional recommendations. As you know, there were eight, and I addressed four of them. So the two more that we would like to look at after the comprehensive plan is adopted is to pursue self-sustaining mixed-income and mixed-use rental development. That is, again, part of what the comp plan is looking at. And then consider an advisory board to guide new zoning changes and redesign workforce housing program. And so of the eight, there are six that we, four that we feel like we could prioritize now, and then after the comp grant is adopted, we could continue to help planning on these other two. And we are not recommending these two at this time, to create a housing assistance fund for workers or to leverage Virginia statewide community land bank. And so let me speak to the reason behind that. So we looked at prevention data here in our department, and in 2021, we received 1,002 calls for households who are at risk of homelessness. What at risk of homelessness means is that you are 30 days or less from being evicted from your home. In 2022, we received 1,099, which was a 10% increase in calls. This past year, in 2023, although we haven't gotten the data from our regional provider that does our calls for us, we completed 1,573 triage assessments for households who were at risk of homelessness. That includes walk-ins as well as people that called the hotline. And so, as you can see, that number is significantly higher than the 1,099 from 2022. And so we believe that at this time, there's a greater need to look at people that are at risk of homelessness than it is to create a fund assistance for workers, because we don't have the data to substantiate that there are people looking for other kind of assistance except for assistance if they're in a housing crisis. And then, oops, excuse me. And then secondarily, the Community Land Trust is a bank that provides strategic process for turning distressed vacant properties into assets focused on affordable homeownership. The land banks work best in areas where major disinvestment and pollution, excuse me, population declines left cities, lots of abandoned properties with little market activity. Hampton Roads, and in particular, Virginia Beach, are considered high-activity areas which have a short list of vacant, blighted, tax-delinquent properties. And in addition, Virginia Beach does not have a lot of developable surplus land to land bank. So we believe at this time that it is not a priority for us to prioritize and work on this completed staff work. So thank you. Questions, comments for me?
Any questions? Michael?
Thank you very much for your presentation and for sharing this with us.
Great pleasure.
I think you brought forward a lot of really, really clarified the path forward on what's a very important issue. Certainly, I'm in agreement with your top four recommendations, the ones that use a development authority to, I don't know what large scale means, but to fund mixed-use development projects. The housing education campaign, I think, is really important, as well as opportunities to streamline and improve the permitting and review process. But the one that I have questions about is about the recommendation to develop a city-managed housing trust fund. So I was wondering, either Ms. Hill or the city manager, if you could let us know what the contemplative funding source for that would be?
And sir, that's the reason why we said research it, because we have to figure out what would be the best funding source. We are aware of several other cities that has started out with about a $5 million investment, and we're able to get philanthropic dollars to match that. So we're trying to see if there is even a market appetite for that in Hampton Roads. And then if we were to do that, what would be the funding source that we could bring for you all to consider, right? This could be part of the conversation that council has as part of that exercise you gave us coming out of the retreat to relook at the dedications and to identify opportunities to focus those towards emergent city council priorities, right? So that could be taken up as part of that consideration as we navigate. That information we'll give you, and also as part as when council contemplates how to address the CIP, because remember, we're going to do a CIP retreat towards August, September timeframe as well. So we were just looking at starting the research and bringing back information for you all to consider, but I do agree with you, sir, that's going to be the hard one to figure out, because like, we all have a whole bunch of needs and a whole bunch of priorities, a whole bunch of work that we already need to work on, catch up on. Finding $5 million from your already finite resource is going to be complicated and difficult.
It will, and as just a quick follow-up, and I'll be more plain about it. I cannot envision an acceptable scenario in which we are using general fund dollars, which are primarily comprised of real estate tax revenue, so effectively making housing even more expensive and driving up rents even more than they already are in this inflationary and economic environment to establish a fund to bring the price of housing down. It just seems counterintuitive and incredibly complicated and problematic from my point of view. So effectively, if the funding source is general fund, we're using real estate tax dollars and raising them, and then using that money, which makes housing more expensive, to make housing less expensive. So that is incredibly concerning to me, and I think we would need to look at another revenue source, maybe in non-city revenue source, or a realignment of dedications, if that's something the council would do.
Okay, Barbara, Josh, and then Chris. Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot Rosemary. Barbara, Rosemary, Josh, and Chris.
Well, affordable housing is a priority everywhere. National priority, state priority, it's a regional priority, and of course, it's a local priority. And so I'm a little confused at the... And so I'm a little confused at the direction we're taking about thinking that we have to do it all locally. And at our last planning district meeting, HRPDC, they had a presentation about wanting to do a regional housing assessment update and asked all of the region to participate. And of course, the City Manager and Mayor said, well, Virginia Beach has already done our study and we're working on it and so forth. I think their proposal was for a $50,000 study with the region, with the housing, Virginia Housing doing the study and I think we've spent $100,000 on this. So I don't know why we are so much thinking we have to go out and do this all on our own. In, in looking at the community of one report that was adopted in 2017, it was all based on regional, the regional relationships and regional cooperation is an essential element in addressing these things for the following reasons. And we had regional projects like Crested Fair Apartments and so forth. So why are we now thinking we've got to do all of this as our own? And I mean, because throughout all of this background, and it does go back to 84, I think, when we first started talking about all of this, all along the way, you know, we keep saying the most of the money is coming from the federal level. And so we have to meet federal standards in order to do these things. Has there been a big change that has caused us to think that we need to go out and do all this just locally?
So I'm not sure how to address that specifically. I mean, council did tell us to look into this for them to do it locally as well. You are right that we have limited capabilities and tools in our asset to address affordable housing, right? Typically, the only ways local government can insert themselves in demonstrably changing that is A, we ought to have the land and/or we have the money and the land or just the money to compel the private sector to build affordable housing. Absence that, we don't have any tools to really move the needle on affordable housing.
Well, I just think if there's going to be a regional study, we ought to be very much a part of it. And, and I think when we were doing these projects regionally, and I think we did have partnerships with other localities in building some of these that we don't want to miss that opportunity and think that we can really do something this massive on our own because as, as this 2017 report clearly says, you know, the boundaries are not, people seeking housing are impartial to city boundaries. And that's true. I mean, this is what we said in our 2017 report, but we seem to have changed all that. And it's such a big thing. I think we really need to look at it as broadly as possible and not jump into this thought that we've got to roll out $5 million and start this project or something because I don't think we can do it on our own. I think we need to be very much cooperative with all the levels of government.
Yeah, and before we move on to Rosemary, you know, let me say, I was also at the Planning Commission meeting where this was discussed. And you know, the thing is, this is not unique to Virginia Beach at all. It is a crisis everywhere. They say national crisis, but you know, but that being said, I think at least the things, I think the benefit of this report is looking at things that we can do. You know, looking at the permit process, the regulatory process, you know, right now, the regulatory process, I believe we're being told there's a $93,000 average cost that goes into every new home being built. And then, you know, just trying to do things, taking a look at infill development, what we can do. And you know, some folks, and I think the education component of that is key because the only way we're going to get any really type of attainable housing is, you know, perhaps with bonus densities and things of that nature that, you know, a lot of folks, quite frankly, don't know, understand. But once again, even by the time we conclude, you know, conduct a study and go through it, that's going to take time. But I think we could, you know, like we said, you know, let's do the things that we can do now, but we have to realize our financial limitations in the, Rosemary?
I have to say, I agree with Councilwoman G., Henley, and the mayor. I started the Housing Advisory Board, Workforce Housing Advisory Board, because it felt like if you worked in Virginia Beach, you should be able to live in Virginia Beach. And there were things that came out of their studies that we really have not implemented at all until the silo project with the bonus densities, whether people liked it or not. They're the first ones to actually, well, the second one to take advantage of bonus density. So I think we need to look at things that aren't really going to cost us dollars. And I think you've already got a, an advisory board, so if you want to have it with the Housing Advisory Board and we've got some wonderful liaisons from the council that are already on that. I don't think we need to create another body. Patrick says, oh no, somebody else for me, another group for me to manage and staff to manage. So we've already got that in place. But I frankly, in my good conscience, people are really upset that their assessments have gone up so much. And maybe it's not so much the assessments, but the taxes have gone up. And so it's really, it's not sustainable. I mean, my personal one in two years has gone up 68%. There's a lot of, and in District Five, we get a lot of retired military. They're on a fixed income. I know we had some speakers who said it was welfare for the rich, but it's not. These are people who worked their whole lives and they have limited funds and, and it's great that their how, probably their number one investment is going up in value, but they need to be able to stay in it. And I, in good conscience, couldn't put our tax dollars into something like this $5 to $10 million trust fund. It's just, I can't support that. Maybe if we can get money from the state, I know the state's doing some things and we can, we can access state and federal funds, but for local dollars, I just can't, and as Barbara has said, we take this money from them, I guess their will. They just don't hand us their tax dollars because they want to. We assess it and they have to pay it or we put names on their files. So when you're looking at that, I think this is, and this is especially a year that we're trying to look where we can clean out the attic and the budget dust and where we can make cuts and we're asking the schools to make cuts. And then for us to do something like this, my conscience couldn't allow me to do it. And I'm sorry to be so frank, but, and Ruthie, you've done a wonderful job, but I think there's some good stuff in here that we can utilize, but I could not support local dollars going into that trust fund.
Yeah, just along with what Rosemary said, if we can, you know, find, you know, external funding, in other words, you get some projects up there that HUD would help out with. And you know, we got that one place on Mediterranean that turned out to be a really good, you know, project. So be creative. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to you and your team for the time and effort and energy you put into this. And I'm certainly, I'm certainly sensitive to a lot of what I've heard in terms of being responsible to the taxpayer. But I don't think, I didn't take any of what I heard today from you or from the manager as, as a decision to move forward with any of this stuff. I mean, what I'm reading here is, you know, you're looking for a direction whether or not to go back and to find ways to find the money to potentially have an impact that doesn't, that takes into account residential taxpayers and the tax burdens that they've taken on. I mean, you know, there may be funding streams in our budget that don't have those adverse impacts on residential taxpayers. And I think, I think maybe we should at least, I mean, we've asked staff, how long have you been working on this?
A year.
So, and, and you know, the prior studies that we've undertaken have certainly come in different housing markets. I mean, this is the most relevant, up-to-date information that we have. We asked staff to work with experts to give us recommendations and you know, and Mr. Manager, you're right, there are, you know, there are few ingredients to affordability in housing that, in terms of what government can do. It's either land or it's money, but the third element that you didn't mention is political will. And this is where that happens. So, and I know it's a budget year and I know assessments are just out of whack because, because of where the market has been. But I mean, I think that, you know, given our professional staff, given the consultants we've used, you know, given the fact that we've gone out and sought community input and here we are, we've got recommendations right in front of us, we can choose whether or not to do them later. But I think we, we need to give the staff the room to go ahead and chase some of this down to see if it's even feasible, to see if we've got an appetite for it, to see where the money is going to come from. You know, this Housing Advisor, the Board that is contemplating, you know, I know, I just read the update, the mid-year report to the focus action report. Mr. Manager, I mentioned to you, I thought was exceptionally well done. I noticed that there, after this, the comprehensive plan update has taken place, that we're going to be looking at some of these zoning, potential zoning changes and potentially having that been, you know, being led by a facilitator. And I think that that could present an opportunity for a Housing Advisory Board to participate into something like that. I also read that, you know, we're, we're looking to find ways to reaffirm our commitment to the Strategic Growth Area Plan. And that plan takes pressure off of the southern part of our city in terms of, you know, concentrating density away from places that flood and, and, you know, and places in the northern part of our city that are already built out and that have aging infrastructure. So we have these, we have all the pieces. We've got, you know, development potential, redevelopment potential in major infrastructure and transportation corridors. And, and I don't even think half, I mean, I sure don't understand how a housing trust fund works. So I mean, I think we just need to, instead of being reactive, I think we just need to kind of let this play out, let staff get a little bit of legs and, and you know, have a little bit of faith and trust because, you know, housing affordability has been a priority for this council since I think the first retreat that we had. And, you know, it's important for our military members, it's important, you know, in terms of attracting new businesses and young people to live here. And for anybody who's, you know, kids are, we don't have basements here, but you know, I mean, that kind of thing, you know, get the kids out. So, you know, and our teachers and our firefighters and city employees. So I'm sorry to kind of be on a soapbox on this, but I think this is one of those ones, if this is going to be a priority and we've said it's a priority, let's, let's give the staff the gas to go ahead and give us some options so that we can make a decision point when it's not during a budget season where we don't have to kind of be mindful of, you know, how, how this kind of translates to the public. So, so anyway, there you go.
Thank you. First, thank you, Mayor Dyer.
Mr. Manager, first, can you, for the public, list our top four priorities that we gave to staff direction or if you have someone from staff that could run that down quickly? It's important.
The top four? I think the top, I think number one is always flood resiliency, right? You know, flood protection, right? Then I would probably say from this council is probably keeping the city affordable. Then I think probably there is probably affordable housing would be in there as well. And then probably a combination of public safety and then education, you know, if I would say a top four or five.
That's important because we've given that direction and we've said that this is important and we haven't done much since the 17 housing study. We asked for a new one and it says the most critical, I like how you put it in a box, is the lack of rental units. And as a liaison with Councilwoman Rouse and Ross Hammond, we've said in meeting after meeting, and you listed the 13% number of all the units built in the last 10 years, pre-COVID, post-COVID, 13%. And so the notion that the private sector is going to solve this problem is probably, I don't have a lot of confidence in that. We haven't proactively addressed it and neither has the private sector. You talk about political will, regulatory process, I've heard the 93,000 number, but again, I'm not going to go through all the numbers of homes built. I'm not seeing that as a reality, but if someone would come forth that keeps throwing those numbers out and show us of the 400 and some homes we built last year, that 93,000 should be pretty easy to find. We've had two housing studies, not much done. We have had one application that came out of the last housing summit for workforce housing and this density bonus, and we all know how that process went and played out, a lot of confusion. And I'm confused here today because we've asked for something, we get the results and then I hear about the money. And I want to show a star contrast because last week, we had a 30-plus minute discussion about sports tourism money that's already budgeted. And the majority of people sitting around this table outside of, I think really one or two, thought we should move forward. It didn't require any additional discussion. We said we would come back, but that's the direction. And it's, it's interesting because this week, we had a council member bring forth an idea. We had two, one main conversation about sports tourism and that kind of veered off into culture and arts as a priority. We saw today that Virginia Westland and Moca with $25 million of private funds, there's not a shortage, there may be a, a, there may be a, I want to make sure I use my words correctly, a perception that there's disparity in how we fund culture and arts versus other, other priorities. And that came forth in a lengthy discussion. But it's interesting because we received, it's a foible email from one of the council members that did not agree that we should just look at sports, we should look at all of it. And there were, in the email, it said there were sponsors for this and it was to inform us that we were going to get a resolution that does two things. It directs the City Manager to execute the sports tourism CIP according to our conversation on Tuesday. We don't need a resolution for that tied to anything else because the majority of the people around the table thought that. But it's interesting because the second thing this resolution would do is direct the City Manager, create options to, for creating a dedicated funding source for arts and culture from existing dedications. And in the discussion, there was some numbers thrown out. One of them was almost $3 million, not from the general fund and report back for consideration within 20 days. And it's interesting because culture and arts is not within our top four, but affordability and the housing affordability is. And yet we're giving direction to the manager with support from members sitting around the table to use and look at dedications that don't come from the general fund to support this, this position to support the arts and culture. And so if it's not in the top five, my question to the manager is while we're simultaneously bringing forth this resolution and there seems to be, according to the email, support, why not look at those same dedications that I brought up at the retreat? I want to make sure that's clear. I found $7.7 million and it wouldn't really impact any of those said funds. Councilwoman Henley and I were in the hallway with Mr. Trimmer from agriculture and had a discussion about the ARP. And agriculture is as important as it is, Mr. Trimmer stated that there could be some room there if there was a discussion. And so I'm just confused as to why we set priorities, ask the staff to go in a direction. And if you could just Google housing trust fund, many municipalities our size are realizing that they can't leave it to the private sector to solve this problem. And the private sector has not, in Virginia Beach, at 13%, decided they want to solve the problem. And so if we can add into the top five priorities, culture and arts, which we just found out today, $25 million in private funds, the state hasn't sent any money down to do anything here about affordable housing at a large number. I don't know if it was part of our legislative agenda. So did we get anything out of it?
No, sorry, it was part of legislative agenda, but we didn't really get anything.
Didn't get anything, so we know the answer there. And to try to put this on the region when it is a serious issue in Virginia Beach is concerning. And so it's in our priorities. If we're going to look at dedicated funding sources and we're going to bring in other aspects to this conversation, then I would be very supportive of looking at those. to this conversation, then I would be very supportive of looking at those same buckets, Mr. Manager, to find out how we can identify monies to align with the strategic priorities your staff has brought forth that we asked them to bring forth. And that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
So first, Ruth, I just want to say thanks. Your always, your directness and candor speaks to me. I like how that's laid out, so I really appreciate it. I really just wanted to say a couple of things in brief. I'd certainly echo what Councilmen Taylor and Berluci have been saying. I too wanted to look at the dedications and the thoughts about reimagining and looking at that and seeing where they are, not being very clear, not doing away with anything, but just maybe being right-sized so that it will help us get some more things accomplished. I think that's, I just think it's a no-brainer. I also agree with Ms. Henley. If we can find a regional bill payer for some of this, we would be foolish not to do that, right? And I'm sure you are, you know, I know that's, that's on the, that's on the agenda. The vice mayor was, you know, saying that the city workforce, I applaud you for starting that. I didn't know you had started that program that's, I think, righteous for what we're trying to do as a city, right? From the operational standpoints of our city employees, it's important to live in the city you're in, because when you need them, you need them, you know? And you find out how much you do need them when the stuff's going crazy, right? So I very much support that. And then with Josh, Councilman Shulman, I certainly think we've given you enough talk. And it's time for y'all to now go back and bring it. And I have the utmost confidence that you'll bring us back something that we can, we can make the sausage, right? That's what we're trying to do here. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else, Sabrina?
I would just say, in listening at the conversation around the table, and being a part of this discussion for several years on the body, I think, you know, sometimes you know when what you have in place may not be working as effectively as you want. So anytime there are fresh ideas, especially that come from studies that we've used taxpayer dollars to pay for, we should consider something new. Fresh ideas, something new to get us in a position where we're moving forward and progressing on the issue, instead of continuing to talk about the same issue with the same things in place, or same commissions or bodies in place, but not progressing. It just does not seem a positive way to address our priorities. And it's almost like, for a lack of a better comparison, you're chasing your tail. You're going in circles. It doesn't make sense. So doing something new to address the problem, to move it forward, seems like it makes sense.
Hey, Barbara, and then more.
In thinking through all of this over the past several days, it seems to me we've got a lot of units in the pipeline. We kind of have a compilation of those that are in the pipeline now. We have approved a zoning for, or we know that there's something coming up, and we've approved money for and so forth. I think there are a lot of units in the pipeline.
That are affordable?
Aren't.
That are affordable?
Well, I think we, we look at, it's sort of a domino effect because as some of this was saying, there's a shortage of units at an affordable level because the people who can afford a more, a higher level don't have anything to move up into. So it's a, it's a progression. So as, particularly as older people are downsizing, if there are units, and I know Westminster Canterbury just broke ground a week or so ago, when they add their units, that's going to free up as these people move out of their single-family homes. And it progresses, so it's a domino effect to each level. And, and so we do need to know all of them, and we can look at them and see where they are and what they're going, what impact they're going to have. Because I think it's important that we keep in mind what's out there that's in the pipeline that's coming along.
Hey, Worth.
Ms. Hill, thank you, and staff. This has been an incredible effort for well over a year now, and a lot of good things hopefully will come out of this. I agree with my colleagues on the housing trust fund, that I'm not, I don't have an appetite to spend general fund dollars for it, but I would like to insert the word land trust fund because I think staff is evaluating our publicly-owned land around the city. And we have one piece of property at the entrance to TCC on Princess Anne Road, where we've been trying to kick off a project there with Miami and VB CDC, and that could lead to 60-some units there. But ultimately, hearing everybody and hearing about this, and Mrs. Henley just, I think, hit the nail on the head, supply and demand. So if you have more supply at all levels, at all price levels, more supply you have, the demand will be what it is, but that's where we are today because we stopped the supply because of COVID and because of the 2007, 8, and 9 Great Recession. Builders stopped building, prices went up, and then all of that stock of housing got absorbed since the Great Recession, 2007, 8, and 9, and then COVID hit, and the interest rates went way down, so that created a lot of demand. So it is where we are now, and I think we do need more housing options at all levels because it does help create more supply. But it's not good to see it at a local, smaller, lower-level entry price for rental units not being out there. So I, a lot of good ideas, but I think I'd like to see us look at a housing land trust fund once, instead of a housing trust fund.
Good. Okay, Amelia.
I agree with you, Councilman, about adding land trust. And also, you'll notice the community engagement is important because even though you have people, let's say, moving up to Westminster, we need to find out their idea of what's happening to their homes, whether they are ready to give it up, or they have intergenerational, they have kids that are now going to move in. So all of that kind of conversation needs to go on before moving forward. Because we're saying we don't have enough land, but yet we're looking at the possibilities of housing that could become available. But we have to put the people in the equation. What are these families, you know, looking at? We want some of their sons and daughters to come back where they're going to stay. So we've got to look at all of that engagement. And if you'll notice, when we're talking about some people giving X amount here for several things from the private, that's their personal. They've decided we want to invest in the arts, or we want to invest in it. That's nothing, you know, from us. We will have to maybe, what do you call, build a relation with them, like they have long-term investment in other areas. It's up to us to create that appetite, that I'm wanting to help others through housing.
Hey, anyone else?
You know, I think this is a, you know, a priority, but also a frustration pretty much for every city in this country. They're having the same conversations, the same frustrations, you know, the same barriers to success, you know, that we're encountering. And if there were a simple solution, it would have been done decades ago. There is no simple solution. There is no path. A couple of years ago, the mayor of Ocean City, Maryland, came down. He wanted to take a look, you know, he was having a homeless problem. And, you know, and Virginia Beach, as has been proven over the decades, has been really engaged in, you know, dealing with this program. It's just not a recent phenomenon. But once again, many cities are, you know, having, wrestling with the same issues and everything. But I think at least from now, let's, you know, do what we can, and, you know, it is a priority. And, you know, once again, you know, you know, let's keep it going and do what we can for now. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I get some clarity. Can you go back to the slide that kind of showed what we were recommending? All right, so council, I'm just going to throw something out there because just, you know, it sounds like the conversation with the Development Authority to fund new large-scale mixed-use development, have a conversation with them, that seems to be okay.
Yeah.
Design, the education campaign seems to be okay. And then research opportunities to simplify and streamline the permitting and review processes. Is it okay for staff to start to work in that space to bring?
Yeah, I think that would be, everybody okay with that? I mean, let it start, and let's see what happens in the future. Chris?
Staff brought forward four items.
So I'm trying to get clarity. So I've listed out the three that I think are okay, right? And then for, so is it okay for me to say those three, okay to explore? But the development of the housing trust fund, that's the fourth one. It seems like there is much debate on what the value of that one, right? Is council wanting us to put that one down and not explore it? Or is council asking us to explore it, but in a way that doesn't increase revenue? So look at dedications or, or something else? Because we can put it down, but I just want to verify before you go forward.
Mayor, I, I support the concept of exploring what funding sources could be available that are outside of the general fund. And I think we need to be very clear about that.
And what you say, sorry, 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 sorry.
I mean, I think I already stated this, there's no need to state it, but we're talking about raising real estate taxes, which makes housing more affordable, to create a fund which makes housing, pardon me, raising real estate taxes, which makes housing more expensive, to create a fund to make it more affordable. It's just a fundamental flaw in that concept from my point of view. If we can explore non-city funds, or even potentially, I don't think, I think we all agree that we need to look at the dedications. And I think Mr. Hutchison explained it very well, not eliminating any, but just to explore. But I don't have a problem exploring, I would support exploring alternative options that don't involve the general fund.
So basically, what I'm hearing is alternative options that don't involve increasing revenues, general fund revenues, or real estate taxes because of this, right? Okay.
You know, basically, you know, look at HUD and, you know, whether, you know, type institutions, you know, you know, and, you know, what was it called? Tunnel, Running for Tunnels, or, you know, a group like that does work with building homes for homeless and things like that, or other avenues. Chris, did you have something?
I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to go down that line, then can staff bring forth instances where VBDA, if worked with them, to build affordable housing or mixed-use development projects that didn't require general fund dollars or dollars from the public?
So VB, I think this would be a space that VBDA would be stepping into. I don't think they've done that before. They're typically just in economic development. I think what we're trying to see now is there's synergy between economic development and housing, which we all kind of know because we're in a place now, every time we bring a development, like for example, Amazon project, the question was, where are these folks going to live, right? But now trying to see if there's a, you can tie in, tie into the incentives that we give for economic development, a component for spurring affordable development, affordable housing on the private sector.
But not any taxpayer dollars.
It is taxpayer dollars, we're using for incentives, but.
Because again, if you bring forth three of them and they need a parking garage, we pay for them all. So again, if the conversation and the concern at the table is about taxpayer dollars, Amazon came 20 million taxpayer dollars for infrastructure, for $17 an hour jobs. So everything we're doing requires taxpayer dollars up until this point because we haven't looked at dedications. So in all fairness, if the housing trust fund, maybe we need to go to the state. Maybe we need to call our Congress people and say, look, we don't have a capacity, we don't have an appetite here to spend any taxpayer dollars to address affordable housing, workforce housing, and so we need you all to develop policies to send us money. Because if you come back with a VBDA project, which I know we have some that are going to be coming out of different closed sessions and talking about those deals, they all require significant taxpayer dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just a thought into, I want to, what someone, Councilmember Remick was saying. And I know staff is doing an analysis of all the property we own. Probably some of that property is never going to be utilized by the city. It could either be a potential funding source for this or possibly contributing from a, from a, you know, land perspective, just contributing the raw land to a deal. And I think, I think we can find other ways to crack this nut. And as far as, as far as the VBDA and the use of taxpayer money for parking garages, I, that to me is a little bit of different kind of conversation. But, but I hear what you're saying. Those parking garages are funded by tax revenues that wouldn't exist but for the development. So, but, but I do think the excess land the city owns could provide us with a little bit of, a little bit of room to work with.
Okay, Rosemary?
There's been a really good conversation. And Ms. Hill, you've done a wonderful job. I know you've worked really hard on this, and you're a very special person that cares about your city. I'm very grateful to you. We've been talking about different things, and there are stuff that, like, like Amazon, that we invested 20 million dollars, but the return on investment, we're going to get all of that money back, plus a lot of other stuff. We're going to get back $3 million a year just on the property tax. So that doesn't count, the other things that are going to come. So I think when you're looking at it, it's not apples and, apples is apples and pears and oranges because of the return on investment. So that's, that's really important. I personally, if you want to go after the housing trust fund, see if we can find some non-local dollars for it. Because I know we're talking about dedications, but I think we may have some other things in mind for those dedications as well. So that's, that's my own personal view. Again, I hope my comments didn't, I hope you understand how much I really do appreciate you and what you do for this city.
Good, Harch.
So I'm still learning. So it feels like we're making the sausage, right? We're just getting everything for the budget and how this is all going to play out in the end. So I'm okay with seeing all the different ways. And in the end, whether it's dedicated money or whether it's with whatever, so I would still like to see some form of what the reconciliation or this money, I don't know what I'm saying here, Patrick, to help me out. You know what I mean, as far as to play it out so that we can do it? If you don't think that's appropriate, okay. But if it is, I'd like to see it that way so we can make an informed decision on all the parts.
All right, Amelia, and then Chris.
Just one last thing, and again, you're all lucky.
I'm not offended, just so you know. Affordable housing is a hot topic. We understand.
And see the work that you do. What order, city manager, are you looking at? Do you have four? Because I can't do all at once.
Staff can review, staff can review all four. Again, we're not asking you all to vote and choose anything. We're trying to get guidance on what to bring forward for you all for a future consideration date. What I'm hearing for the housing trust fund is explore it, but be cognizant of your concerns, not to be funded by new revenue, and to see if we can tap into other dollars and resources. And then as you all have your conversation about repurposing dedications, this would be something in the background with a whole bunch of other things in the background. This may be something that you all latch on to, you know? So that's where, I just want to get a sense of what kind of boundaries you wanted to put on us as we explored any of this stuff further. The last thing I heard was, it came from Mr. Remick about maybe, as we, and Mr. Shulman, maybe after we finish doing all the work on stress testing the city properties and what they could possibly be used for, then that may then create an opportunity for a land trust opportunity. So I'll keep that in mind as well.
I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Really concerned because we've yet to even get a report back from the manager about the conversation of dedication. So when the vice mayor says we may have other ideas, they haven't been expressed, maybe to you privately. And clearly by the email, there are some ideas. And so we're competing over resources for dedicated possible policy changes that we haven't discussed as a body, but yet there are plenty of conversations taking place. And yes, it may be apples and peaches, and maybe throw in some watermelon too. But the greatest ROI to our workers that we discovered in the housing study is that the hotel workers, the restaurant workers, the people that are at the resort, outside of you being a general manager, a professional, they can't live in our city. So we always talk about ROI, not necessarily always being ROI. In this situation, maybe the ROI of an investment of dedications to provide a solution is more people that work at our resort and our hotel industry. And then the restaurants would be able to afford something here because someone brought up the property in Princess Anne Plaza by the one life. I mean, 60 units, so you said 6,000 have been developed, roughly 13% of those. I mean, 60 is not going to put a dent in it. And so I think we, I would love the position that we don't make any decisions about dedications and any new resolutions until we actually get a full review from you, Mr. Manager, of what's available, the capacity, what we can and cannot do. Because I I already am aware there's conversations going on, and there's big numbers being tied to uh, some of these requests. So if it's apples to apples, let's just be fair and get a full presentation from the manager on what's available before we start coming forth with resolutions to appropriate millions of dollars to certain priorities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you're all set, Patrick?
Yeah, I think I got what I needed. Thanks.
Ruth, thank you so much.
Yeah.
You know, the work you do is phenomenal.
So, Mr. Mayor, Ruth's going to stay up there. And Ruth, the next presentation.
I have some.
So the next presentation, in 2017, City Council adopted a Community of One Plan to address homelessness, and you adopted that in the resolution. Um, it's time to get that refreshed, because that was a post-COVID, that was a pre-COVID mentality, and we're in a post-COVID world. The the regional work group that helped create that plan has been working to refresh a plan that we're bringing forward to you all for consideration. Again, we're not asking council to adopt this at this time, but we're going over the plan right now to see if there's any concerns that you all may have with the plan. If there's any changes that you want us to do or anything else you want to look into further. Eventually, the goal would be for us to get a public hearing on this, see what the public's feedback would be on this, and then after that public hearing, bring it back for City Council for consideration. Ruth, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon again. I'm Ruth Hill, if you didn't know, and I am putting on my other hat, a homeless services hat. Um, and I'm going to start the presentation, but I have with me Pamela Shine, who's my homeless services administrator, and she's going to dig into uh, to the data kind of significantly with you. So, um, um, Councilman Henley, as you mentioned, this is, what I'm going over now is the update for the 2017 Community of One, a plan that you mentioned. And when you were talking, yes, ma'am, and when you were talking about the regional dedication there, I want to make clear, that was a regional approach for permanent supportive housing, for people experiencing homelessness, not just affordable for people in our community. So I just thought that it would be appropriate to make that clear. So our goals today are to review the community ones, uh, our community system to address homelessness, highlight the progress since 2017 plan, and then propose goals and key strategies of the updated plan. And then we will seek your feedback at a later date. As City Manager mentioned, there's no policy decision requested at this time. So let me make it really clear that we address homelessness as a as a system here in the city of Virginia Beach. What that means is, we have a city faith and a nonprofit partnership. Um, it's called Beach Community Partnership, and it has a third, over 30 years commitment of working together. It began in 2009. Um, Beach Governing Board was formalized, uh, it, excuse me, is required by HUD, so we have to have an overseeing board. We have recently had the pleasure of having Dr. Ross Hammond, Councilwoman Hammond, come to those meetings, and so we're so pleased she's attending. And so I wanted to just remind you that there's three ways to access the service system here in our city. One is through the Housing Resource Center. The second is through the Regional Houses Crisis Hotline. The data that I shared with you in the housing study was from the Regional Houses Crisis Hotline. That is a partner that takes calls from everybody in the 757, including Hampton and um, and Newport News, and then they extrapolate out the data to us of City of Virginia Beach residents. And then, thirdly, our homelessness outreach team goes out and does engagement with our unsheltered population, and they can actually do real-time, on-time assessments with them. So there, here's the list of over 30. I'll give you a moment. I'm not going to read them all, but you just recently saw one of our partners that was here just a few weeks ago presenting. And so, um, many churches, many organizations, and then the city, um, to include some of the departments that are here represented in our, in our gallery today. So the community resources that people receive through homeless services include financial assistance, permanent housing, shelter, and case management. Now, again, let me reiterate, this is a community approach. This is not just city providing these services, but it's in partnership with those 30 organizations that are part of Beach Community Partnership. Um, there are food, there's food and meals, community dinners, bag lunches, pre-packed grocery, and food pantries. Um, there's basic assistance, day support, showers, laundry, housing support, clothing, ID birth certificate assistance, financial assistance, hygiene items. There's a bike program that a, one of our church partners does. There's LGBTQ and youth meetings, and then we have preventative medical services as well. So our goal is to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. We know that we can't say it's going to be ended, but what that means is that when it's rare, it means we prevent people from experiencing homelessness, which is our prevention and diversion work that we do to ensure that people don't become homeless in the first place. Second, it's brief. We shorten the amount of time that they experience homelessness as best as we can. And then non-recurring means that they're stably housed, and they can maintain it with some support from our service delivery system. So our philosophy and service delivery approach is a housing-first philosophy. Um, you've just recently heard about this, and what it means is you have a stable place to live, um, and people can then take additional steps they need to thrive. What it doesn't mean is that, um, that everybody has necessarily housing, right? Housing first doesn't mean that we have the ability, and we just talked about it in the last presentation, the affordability need is is very large. Um, but it's about removing the barriers to housing, and then it doesn't create the more housing. We have to create the housing to ensure that people have a place to live. It is a best practice, um, and equitable approach, and if not for this assistance, as you can see, we have, we have a prioritization list in the area. And how we prioritize people for, um, for services, particularly for shelter, is you have to be 65 or over, you have to have medical vulnerabilities, you're either a family with children, zero to five years old, and then you're, or you're somebody living in an encampment with a notice to vacate. So that's how we prioritize people that get into our shelter. And as you know, we just, um, increased our beds to 30 at the HRC. We're doing a phased-in approach there, so we will have 82, um, excuse me, 87. We had 82, yes, we, 87 total shelter beds at the HRC. So, um, did I go backwards? No. So the Community of One, and we have added All In to the name this year. Um, All In is the name of the Federal Strategic Plan to End Homelessness, and Pam was, um, bold enough to call the federal government and ask if we could add it to our Community of One Plan, and she got permission to do that, so thank you, Pam, for that. Um, but it was adopted in 2017. It's a collective work of the City of Faith and Nonprofit, and it's a path forward to the future. There were seven core goals. I'm going to go over you and share with you how we did, which actually is quite impressive. Um, so, again, this was a three-year plan, but because pandemic hit, we never were able to do an update of the plan, and so we are bringing the update to you. So it actually turned out to be more like a five-year plan, but, um, we are making the, um, update to you now. So the first goal was to transform our service delivery system. And what we did, the biggest win there was we completed the HRC in 2018, and we expanded prevention services. Um, we have served approximately 20, 2,300 people, um, experiencing homelessness since this started. Goal two is to make homeless, um, less rare, brief, and non-recurring. And the great win here is that we expanded housing opportunities, which contributed to a 22.5 decrease, again, I want to say decrease, in the percentage of families with minor children experiencing homelessness. So what, what, that was a real highlight and a, um, it was a priority for us to make sure that moms with, with children zero to five were not living in their cars or on the streets, and so we saw a really decrease in that number. The third goal is to make, um, is we, to make, um, chronic homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. And so we saw an 11% decrease in chronic homelessness. A chronic, a definition of chronic homelessness is a single individual who has got a, um, a, um, what's the word, disabling condition, thank you for the word, disabling condition, and has been homeless for either a year continually or has had four episodes of homelessness in a three-year period. So we saw 11% decrease in that. Continue on to, um, number four, we making youth homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. We expanded our youth opportunities, targeting youth. We, we saw 53% decrease in unaccompanied homeless youth. Goal five is to increase and maintain the supply of permanent accessible affordable housing. Through our nonprofit partners, you can see that we were able to, um, house 350 Virginia Beach resident, excuse me, households. And we want to thank you, because through the ARPA funding, you guys allowed us to have 65 emergency houser vouchers through the American Rescue Act plan, and we have, um, I'm pleased to say that we have issued every one of those 65 vouchers. So that's great news. Goal six is to increase our leadership, collaboration, and civic engagement. We've added some new service providers, Brightview Health, Connect With A Wish, Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia, and Stand Up For Kids are now part of our team. Is that correct? I've lost my page. So what it, thank you. I went too far. Thank you. I was like, this is, yeah. So, um, and so goal seven, yes, I'm sorry, is to maintain and sustain resources to support our ongoing community effort. This is a really huge win. You talked about needing funds from, um, other places for the affordable housing. We have a wonderful foundation called VB Home Now, um, who has raised nearly 1.7 million dollars in private donations, and they have given out 800,000 to invest in not only the Housing Resource Center, but other partners in our city that are doing work. They do a, every year, they provide an RFP process where people can submit applications, and we give out, they give out funding. So that's a huge win as well. So before I go on, any questions about those seven goals and our progress? Yes, ma'am.
One quick question. You have 30 community partners.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there cap?
No, ma'am, not at all.
I wonder how far the funds will go if we suddenly have 40, because we have the community partners who are passionate about doing what they do. And I sat there listening to some of the interviews, for them to explain why they do what they do. And it's very detailed, the questions are asked, who they're doing well. What I wanted just to know, is there, there's no cap? Anybody can start an organization and join that, but they have to realize that I'm from city, and you all go through the whole process to make sure they're doing well with what they get from it.
Correct. The meeting that you attended, ma'am, was Continuum of Care Dollars. That was HUD money, that they require us as a board to sit and look at applications and determine, um, as a body, who should, who we should prioritize for that funding. So that's not city funding at all, that's HUD funding. Yeah, good question.
So what do you do for city funding then?
So we have no dedicated city funding that we put out. VB Home Now, who is that nonprofit I just mentioned, they do, they do the RFP from them, and they are the, that board makes the decision of who they should fund. Thank you.
Bruce, thank you, Mayor Dyer. The goal five, maintain and increase the supply of permanent accessible and affordable housing. So nonprofit partners receive increased continuum system to house 3V, 350 VB households, and then increased affordable housing opportunities. And then you mentioned the 65, and that was funded through the ARPA funds.
Correct.
And those are now going away.
Correct.
65, what happens to those 65 families?
So the goal with the ARPA funds is that it is a short-term subsidy, and that once they're housed with it, the the case managers will work with them, identify employment opportunities and get them, um, so that they can make, bring in income so that they can afford the unit on their own when the subsidy ends.
And what happens in the situation they don't achieve that goal?
Well, the subsidy ends. If they can't, they may have to find a more affordable unit if they can, if hopefully they don't get back into the homeless services system. Um, we, we were really good, and Pam would have this data in her head, it's not in my head, but when we, during our, our COVID dollar, uh, COVID money, when we, um, put people in, um, non-congregate sheltering, um, it's a high percentage of people that we actually housed from that that sustained their houseability and did not, did not recidivate back into homelessness. 40%, thank you. See, I knew she'd know. Yeah, so.
And you said there's currently zero city dollars that go towards this?
Except for the HRC dollars, what you fund us at the HRC, but we don't put out an RFP, um, the way that, uh, Dr. Ross Hammond was describing it, to have other community, uh, partners, um, getting funding from us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, did I skip again, or am I, no. So this is one of my favorite slides here. Um, this is just, again, talking about a win. This talks about the returns to homelessness here, uh, the recidivism again. You can see in year 2019, uh, the percent of people, um, that returned back to homelessness in six months was 11%, uh, in 12 months, it was 4%, and and then in 24 months, it's 4%. You can look down, in 2022, we are, we have lowered the six-month rate, and we're maintaining the 12 and the 24-month rate. So we're doing well in terms of keeping people housed. So I think that's important for you to to know. So let me, um, here it is, right here, 40%. Thank you, Pam. Um, I just talked about this scaled up to shelter. And there were 452 individuals with non-congregate shelter between March 2020 and May 2021. And we were the first, um, in our region to put people in non-congregate shelter. We launched the program when the pandemic hit in in four days, which is huge. All right, I am going to turn it over to Pam, but before I do that, in your packet was this Taking Root pamphlet, and I wanted to share it with you. This is the, the HRC had their fifth anniversary in 2023, and so this is the data about all that the HRC has done. And I wanted to commend you as council people, because without, uh, the HRC, we would not be doing the robust services that we are. And so thank you for your commitment to homeless services in our city. Please take a moment to look at that. So we talked about what we know and, um, what we have done in the past. And now I'm going to pass it over to Pam, who's going to take us to what we're learning and what the future can be for us here in the city in terms of homeless services. She's going to bring data, community engagement, and best practices to us and share with you.
And Pam, please be sure to introduce yourself and your title when you get up.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Rosemary Wilson, and members of City Council. My name is Pamela Shine, and I am the Homeless Services Administrator for the Department of Housing Enablement Preservation. And I am a bit nervous of being here with you guys today, so please give me grace. Um, in considering quantitative data to shape the goals of the plan, we looked at several data points. The first one is what you see here is our point in time, which is our annual enumeration of the unsheltered and sheltered, um, households in our community. And as you can see, since 2020, we have not seen significant changes in our counts. Uh, but in 2018, we did have a 30% decrease, which was mainly due to reallocating funds supporting a large transitional housing project. And mind you, um, when individuals are in transitional housing project, they maintain their homeless status. Uh, we reallocated those funds, and we created a rapid rehousing program that provided more housing placements for that year. And in 2020, we experienced a 23% increase, um, due to a change in our counting methodology, uh, where we included individuals living in their cars in parking lots. And in 2021 and 2022, the years of the pandemic, we were scaling up sheltering, as Director Hill just stated, um, as a response to the pandemic. And in 2023, we experienced a change in that trajectory, and we had an 11% decrease in our counts, mainly due to scaling down sheltering and non-congregate models, uh, post-pandemic, and using COVID-19 funding to add. and using COVID-19 funding to add more housing opportunities in our system. Our by-name list or prioritization list is another data point. This data represents all of the households who connected to our system in 2023. So as you can see, in 2023, we served 1,656 households who were literally homeless that year. And out of that number, 48% became inactive, meaning we lost contact with them 30 days consecutively. 32% were housed, 3% exited to other institutions such as jails, hospitals, psychiatric institutions, and 17% remain on the by-name list and rolled over to this year. It is also important to note that all of the, all of the data points that I will be going over today represent system-wide data as opposed to one program's data. This graph shows the length of time people are homeless based on emergency shelter and transitional housing projects. And as you can see, the average number of days people are staying in shelter and transitional housing has almost doubled in the last few years. Ideally, we want to be in the, in the range of 60 to 90 days. So people are staying longer in shelter because mainly limited availability of housing. This data point shows exits to permanent housing. The universe of people involved in this data set are individuals and families enrolled in emergency shelter and transitional housing programs. And as you can see, the greatest percentage of exits took place in 2021. And that was mainly attributed to our decision to make investments in housing as a result of receiving state-funded COVID-19 funding. As we were increasing sheltering, we also increased housing opportunities and we believe that was a critical factor in not seeing a significant increase in our PIT numbers in 2022 and the decrease we experienced in 2023. Other communities, they experienced huge upticks in their homeless population during the pandemic. Ideally, we want to be at 50% and above in our exits to permanent housing. Our ability to significantly reduce homelessness is predicated on how much permanent housing is available to meet the needs of households experiencing homelessness. The number, this graph is showing the number of people experiencing homelessness and connecting with our system for the first time. And as you can see, since 2019, we have had an 18% increase in households experiencing homelessness for the first time. In 2023, we decided to add a question to our triage assessment. And the question was, what was the primary cause of homelessness, of, of your homelessness when they are presenting for shelter? And the top four reasons are loss of housing, not due to eviction, but simply because they could not afford to renew their lease agreement because of the increase in rent. The second reason, they were evicted due to non-payment of rent. And the third reason, relational issues. And the fourth reason, insufficient income. Unsheltered homelessness remains a top community concern and we knew we needed to develop specific strategies in order to adequately address it. At any given time, 150 households are experiencing unsheltered homelessness in our community and a small subset of those households live in encampments. And we'll talk a little bit more about encampments in the next slide. Outreach is working with approximately 21 encampments that make up about 75 individuals living in those encampments. We also know that people would rather not see persons experiencing homelessness so visibly in areas of our city. We also know that people experiencing homelessness are the most marginalized groups of people in society. They are constantly being treated as if they do not matter and that somehow it is okay for them to be mistreated or have their basic human rights imposed upon them simply because they lack an address. There is also a misperception about homeless outreach. It is important to note that our homeless outreach team is not an enforcement authority. They are all, they are, they're all about building trusting relationships and helping unsheltered individuals navigate the system of care to ultimately connect to housing and services. They are also not mental health or substance abuse clinician, and there are only four of them, as mighty as they are, providing outreach services across the geography of Virginia Beach. Encampments are both controversial and challenging. According to a study conducted by APF Associates and sponsored by HUD in 2018, the primary reasons people are resistant to shelter and prefer encampments are, they do not want to leave their personal belongings behind nor their pets. Shelters do have, do not have the capacity to accommodate all of their personal belongings or their non-service animals. They are concerned about communicable, communicable diseases or illnesses. Mind you, this study was conducted pre-pandemic, so naturally this concern has heightened significantly with the pandemic. They want the autonomy to come and, and go as they please and shelters with restricted entry and exit times do not align with that autonomy. And they prefer housing or non-congregate shelter models. As a side note, encampment residents were offered first opportunity for placement in our expanded shelter that opened on February 19th, as Director Hill mentioned. And unfortunately, no one chose this option. Addressing the issue of encampment requires a delicate balancing act. We have to be concerned about the health and safety of our community and the surrounding community in proximity to the encampment. We have to consider the system's ability to provide shelter and housing. We must lead with compassion, empathy and trauma-informed care practices. We must consider property ownership of the land that the individuals are residing on and we must consider legal precedents, both local and national. There is a legal precedence that will be set by the Supreme Court next month in the case of the City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson. This is a case that involves the local court's ruling in favor of Johnson, an individual experiencing homelessness. The local court ruled that it was unlawful for Johnson to be criminally penalized for sleeping outside when shelter beds or housing are unavailable. The city appealed the court's decision and the Supreme Court reheared the case and gave their ruling. Their decision will set the course of action of how every community will address unsheltered So it's important that the community of one all-in updated draft plan reaffirms our community's commitment to working together, maintain and enhance what is already working. And we want to use this plan as our clarion call to fully invest in partnerships and resources towards effective solution that will significantly reduce the footprint of homelessness in our, in our community. So the plan involves three broad goals. Goal one, we would like to create safe and healthy neighborhoods by reducing impact of unsheltered homelessness. Goal two, increase system capacity to address the primary root causes of homelessness. And goal three, preserve and increase prevention and permanent housing programs to meet the demand. The bullets below are some of the proposed strategies to accomplish each of the goals. I will only highlight only a few of those strategies, but you have the full plan in your packet. We have discussed how we use quantitative data to shape the plan, but of equal importance, qualitative data was also baked into the development of those goals. We started with doing a SWOT analysis with our beach community partnership, who is, which is our homeless coalition, and as you can see in the pictures. We conducted a food and feedback forum for individuals with living experience. There is a saying that if you want to know how to help someone, ask the person who needs to help. Well, we did and they were not short on their delivery. They really provided some thoughtful and valuable feedback and we have incorporated several of their ideas into this plan. We held a public input session and organized a panel of discussion of experts on unsheltered homelessness. And we released a public survey, and on the right you can see some of the outcomes of that survey. There was an overwhelming support of all of the goals and some of the feedback that was highlighted is also included at the bottom. So getting into some of the strategies. Under goal one, strategy 1.1, we are proposing to increase the number of year-round shelter beds. How we are proposing to do this is highlighted in pink, is utilizing available space in the HRC to create a small overflow shelter program from April to March, similar to the winter shelter. This idea was floated by the participants of the food and feedback forum. They recognized that in the HRC, there are two classrooms that go under, underutilized at night. And so they asked, why can't we bring in mats and want to place people in those empty spaces? Great idea, right? Because in the HRC, you have all of the ancillary supports that's needed. You have the medical facility, we have a dining hall and we have human services upstairs, bringing in their community resources and we also have day support. This is the most cost-effective way of adding shelter beds in our system. We wanted to ensure all shelters are low barrier and welcoming, utilizing trauma-informed care so people want to enter into shelter. We want to increase non-congregate sheltering opportunities for the most vulnerable families with small babies that are living outside, not in a car, but actually who are outside or elderly population when our year-round shelter beds are full. And we want to keep all of our shelters open and allow participants to stay in the room during daytime hours. And working with our emergency shelter providers, we found out that although they were not putting a prohibition on them staying in the building, they could not reside in their sleeping areas. So we are working with the provider to remove that prohibition and allow them to remain in their sleeping areas. Strategy 1.2, increase access to basic need services. We are proposing to do this by expanding HRC day services hours to include weekend hours. We want to build partnerships to provide storage, partnerships with storage facilities, to provide storage of personal items for unsheltered individuals who are actively working towards housing. Those two ideas were also floated by the food and feedback participants. Want to enhance outreach to encampments by investing in a tool to map and track the sites and improve opportunities for connections. That's to show the way app. And want to increase the capacity of outreach by providing employment opportunities for two individuals with lived experience to, to provide peer support outreach. Also under goal one, we would like to convene providers across the service sector to address the needs of unsheltered residents. We wanted, we want to do this by developing a multi-departmental strategy to ensure compassionate, client-centric approaches to the clearing of encampments that presents health and safety issues. These encampments are the ones that are, have deplorable conditions. They have bio-waste hazard and they have excessive trash. Want to partner with pet agencies to provide pet support such as pet medical care, care, supplies and pet fostering services for pet owners experiencing homelessness. And we want to educate the business and community associations about the resources that are available in our city. That was voted by a resident that attended the input session. Also under goal one, we want to, strategy 1.4, increase access to mental health and substance abuse recovery services. In 2023, 41% of those who presented as literally homeless indicated dealing with a mental health challenge that impacted their daily living. It is imperative that we increase staffing and hours of mental health and peer recovery street outreach to support individuals challenged with sever, with severe mental illness and substance addiction. And the last bullet comment was also an idea that was floated by the food and feedback forum. They wanted access to a non-clinical mental health support group that just really focused on coping with everyday life issues. And they wanted that to take place in the HRC. Goal two, ensure adequate supply of affordable housing targeting low-income households is what Director Hill just got done reporting on. This include research opportunities to simplify and streamline the permitting and review process to allow for an increased density of affordable housing. We also can increase affordable housing by including, increasing our landlord partnership. We want to provide incentives like risk mitigation funds and sign-on lease bonuses for landlords to set aside units in existing projects for individuals experiencing homelessness. And to your right, you see a, a quote by the housing study report that says, cost-burdened households with extremely low income and severely cost-burdened households with very low income are at risk of homelessness due to housing affordability. And it bears repeating that the top two reasons why individuals and families are experiencing homelessness in our city, loss of housing due to the fact they could not afford their rent and being evicted due to non-payment of rent. Goal two, strategy 2.2, we are proposing to ensure all able-bodied adults experiencing homelessness have access to livable wage employment. The data point to your left is area median income of literally homeless households between the years of 2020 and 2023. As you can see, 42% of those households entered our system with no income. 40% entered our system with 1 to 30% AMI. And contextually, what that means is a household of one, you're not making any more than $25,000 a year. A household of four, you're not making any more than $30,000 a year. So we're proposing to partner with workforce development agencies to develop tailored employment programs targeting households who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. Partner with business, businesses interested in offering programs to increase technical and soft skills of individuals who are experiencing homelessness or those who are at risk, thereby increasing their marketability in the job force, giving them greater opportunity to earn livable wages. Strategy 2.3 is eliminate disparities in access, service provision and outcomes in overrepresented subpopulations in the homeless system of care. I just came back from the National Alliance to End Homelessness Conference in San Francisco and one of the quotes from that conference is housing justice is racial justice. As we see here in the graph, African-Americans make up 53% of the population experiencing homelessness. This is an egregious disparity, given the fact that African-Americans make up only about 18% of the general population of Virginia Beach. We know this disparity is mainly attributed to the structural and systemic racism that has been in place long before these households entered the homeless service system. We want to ensure that we are not perpetuating those disparities when they enter our system and therefore we are proposing to develop a racial equity committee to review and analyze data, assess motives, system processes to ensure equitable housing outcomes for persons of color. Goal three, strategy 3.1 is ensure prevention resources are targeted to households who are most vulnerable to homelessness. And what this means is we want to ensure we are serving households that if it were not for the assistance, they would experience literal homelessness. Secondly, recognizing that the third leading cause of households experiencing homelessness in our community was relational issues and also recognizing homelessness is a catastrophic loss of family, we are proposing to invest in family mediation training for diversion specialists to support, to support host families that house relatives or friends who are at risk of homelessness to overcome those relational challenges and keep those households housed safely with their host family. Strategy 3.2, ensure an adequate supply of housing that meets the needs of all populations experiencing homelessness. We're proposing to do this by collaborating to implement plans that address permanent housing needs and funding for youth, aging out of foster care and returning citizens to prevent homelessness. We want to increase the supply of rapid rehousing for the general population of homelessness as opposed to specific subpopulation as we have now. This includes recruiting other nonprofits to participate in the continuum of care and to go after available federal funds to create rapid rehousing programs. So what is a measure of our, of our success? At the end of the five years, we're hoping to have a 25% reduction in the number of households entering the homeless service system. We would like to see a 30% increase in the number of households exiting the system to permanent housing. We're proposing that we will see a 40% reduction in the number of households experiencing unsheltered homelessness and we want to declare a functional end to chronic homelessness. We want to replicate the success of the Veteran Initiative where we declared a functional end to veteran homelessness, which simply means when a veteran enters our system of care, they are connected to housing opportunity within 30 to 60 days. That is still occurring now and that initiative took place in 2015. We want the same thing to happen to individuals with long histories of homelessness and are grappling with a disabling condition. So what are, what are our takeaways? VB is a very caring and benevolent community. This plan will take strategic, traditional and non-traditional partnerships. Your commitment, City Council, both in words and in deeds, has made and continues to make a tremendous impact in the work to end homelessness in our community. has made and continues to make a tremendous impact in the work to end homelessness in our community. And in spite of what we're seeing in the way of encampments, we are making huge progress towards the goal of ending homelessness. Believe you me, I just left San Fran and we're nowhere near the level and scope of homelessness as San Francisco is experiencing. And again, homelessness is a housing issue and we need more housing to significantly reduce its footprint in our community. And finally, the artwork you see on the container was done by individuals experiencing homelessness. It says, "No one is home until everyone is home." The embodiment of that sentiment requires for us to be a bold community of one that is all in in ensuring that everyone has a place to call home.
That was an outstanding report you gave. Rosemary?
Pam, that was absolutely fantastic, really fantastic. She came and did a presentation at one of my town hall meetings and she was definitely a shining star. And you can see with her knowledge and the way she presents herself, what a great impression you leave. Thank you for working for our city and this is a great report. And just full of really good nuggets of things that we can wrap our arms around. And, you know, not just pie in the sky, but these are actual things that we can do. So thank you so much for all your efforts.
Anyone else work? And then Barbara.
Thank you, Ruth Hill. Thank you for your work in this area. Just one quick question on strategy 1.1, increase the number around shelter beds. Is there a number, is it 20 beds, is it 50 beds, is the estimate on that?
So we believe we could fit 25 in each night if there's a need for 25.
That's the strategy, just limited to the housing resource center?
Correct, yes, sir.
Not outside?
No, sir, in the building. And this picture, just so you know, is the new expanded 30-bed units at the HRC.
This is the one that you gave us funding for last year, City Council, so we're able to kind of get that executed.
Yeah.
Barbara?
Well, your five-year report is just so amazing to look at all those numbers. I think it shows that it was the right investment and y'all were really working at it. And obviously, the homelessness issue is easier to kind of get numbers with than this unaffordable housing thing or affordable housing because that's just so broad. But they are interrelated and it's an issue and y'all are certainly addressing it. And I think the numbers show that. They pay on slide four or page four, you list your partners. Union Mission is not on here. Is that not operating in Virginia Beach anymore?
No, ma'am. Union Mission is a Norfolk organization. And they are a regional provider and they do serve people from outside of Norfolk, but their facility is in Norfolk.
Hope Haven.
Hope Haven is here in Virginia Beach, but Hope Haven does not serve homeless. They do things with children. They have kind of a camp in their Hope Haven Center. It's not for persons experiencing homelessness.
No longer having the home for the elderly there? Is that not happening now?
The last that I heard, and let me not misspeak, but they were not doing it on an ongoing basis. No, ma'am.
They have the summer camp, but they don't have the orphanage there that they used to have?
Correct.
That's an awful lot of really good area that could be greatly utilized. I would hope we could work with them and bring those facilities back into play. Because it's just, I mean, I know a summer camp is nice, but there's a lot of facility there.
Yeah.
And it's a shame it's not being used because you could just about take our problem and fix it if we have all, because that's already built. I hope to work with them.
Okay, anyone else familiar?
Again, I want to thank both of you and Pam. As you know, recently, just last week, I saw an encampment and immediately called Jonathan. And he says, "Let me get to Pam." And there were about three shelters on a very strange spot over the bridge. And I thought, someone wake up in the morning, not realizing where they are? It would have been terrible. Could have lost lives. So right away, we got to it. I didn't hear it all over the news or anything. That's how quickly they're working and I passed that way before I came. All cleaned up, same where you're presenting in Gold One with the shelters. I asked, "How many major crimes happen in this?" Hardly anything. Which shows the attention they're giving, the cleanliness. So I applaud what you're doing. Thank you all.
Thank you for your prayers.
We were given a presentation by Penn and I see they're here as a partner. They had a similar proposal in terms of providing additional shelter. And they said they didn't need much space, didn't need a Taj Mahal, just kind of a building. Based on that presentation, I mean, is this crossover? Is this parallel lane? Is there still a need? Because they're requesting something specific for us to assist them in that.
So my sense is that because we've just increased the beds at the HRC by 34, that we should wait and see how that plays out in terms of the numbers. It just makes sense to wait, give ourselves some time to look at the data. As Pam indicated, the fact that we have the ability to put something in the HRC to increase capacity should we need to after looking at the data, you know, after several months of opening extended bed. It just makes sense that we let that play out and give it some time.
So you don't see an immediate demand?
Not from my perspective, sir, no.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Sabrina and then Josh.
To that point that you mentioned, Ms. Hill, I think really the concern was that folks who are in need of shelter or who are homeless, they are not able to frequent that location. And so the need was for something that may not be at the HRC, but something maybe more accessible to where people who are homeless frequent. And so I would say, and a bit in opposition to that, that we should still consider for that reason. We did, I believe, the investment in the HRC was, you know, to be the main source and solution for homelessness in the city. But even with the HRC, we see that homelessness still persists because it's in a location where most folks can't get to or access services. Thank you.
May I speak to that, Ms. Wooton? So two things that I'd like to mention is, one, the first year of the HRC, and I was the homeless services administrator at the time, we actually provided transportation to the oceanfront for people to come to the HRC and found that it was not utilized. Additionally, we have winter shelter now from, as you guys know, from November to March. And people get to the HRC for winter shelter now when they want shelter. So we believe that there's data to indicate that people are coming if they want the service. Doesn't necessarily mean that just because you build it at the oceanfront that all people will access the service. It's just what we know about this population.
I was asking about transportation at one time and I thought that we didn't have that available. If we do, I'd like to see that put back into play. Because in my encounters with people who need services and who are homeless, they specifically ask for ways to get to the location. And I have specifically asked on several occasions and have been told it's not available. So if we do have that, as you state, can we get that service back in practice or have it available to where, say, if, you know, I'm out and I see the need, I can call and say, "Hey, can we go and pick this person up? I'm out here. They need assistance. Let's help and make that happen." I have not seen that and have requested it. So if you do have it, how can we get that back?
It's actually in your plan, ma'am. We've added it in for the new strategy.
So it is now active again?
No, ma'am. We've, yeah, we've put it in the plan because, again, there's a need. We want to meet the need of those that are coming and saying, "This is something we don't have." So we've heard it as well. So we've put it as part of the strategy in your plan that was presented today.
Good. I concur with that. But I still maintain the position that I mentioned before. I think we need to look at other options. Although HRC is a great investment, there still is a need that surpasses the HRC. And I think it's evident as we look around the city and see the numbers going up. From my experience, there is still a need. So you may say, certainly pause and see, and I understand that, but I think there's still a need.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sharon, thank you very much. I also was extremely grateful when you came to our shared town hall, I believe District Four, District Nine. People really seem to, you know, just appreciate you being there and providing the information. And your staff, of course, being available to address some of the encampment issues that we've encountered. To that end, I think I heard you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there are only four people in the city of Virginia Beach that respond to these encampments on a city-wide basis. Is that correct?
I would say, I would say there's four people in housing and neighborhood prevention. A lot of times, it's the police department and then, you know, they engage. And sometimes our resort management ambassadors engage as well. But as far as getting people the support they need and the resources they need, there's only four. But there is, and they all work together on how best to engage, right? You know, so I do think our housing neighborhood prevention staff, they do spend a good amount of time trying to train as many liaisons in the city as possible. So when we engage, we have at least a trauma-informed approach before we can connect them with the four individuals that can help connect them to the resources.
And since you acknowledge a resort ambassador, I also, just from a firsthand perspective, want to acknowledge the town center ambassadors as well because I see them out there every day and they do a great job. And I know for a fact that they've been wrestling with these issues as well. So based on the level of, I guess, staffing that you have to address this through your department, and I don't want to put you on the spot by any means, but is that adequate from your perspective? And a follow-on to that is, to the extent these three goals and the various strategies to achieve those goals involve the commitment of additional resources, do you have those resources or will they be, I guess, communicated to us as part of the budget request that you're going to be making in the next month?
So we did not ask for additional resources for this budget request because we're just presenting the plan that council will have to adopt before we ask for additional resources. But yes, indeed, if you remember back in one of the slides, if Jasmine can look it up, there was the need for at least two more outreach workers was in it. We talked about landlord mitigation funds, which is a resource that we could use. If we do the expanded shelter beds, there would be the additional funds there. Not exorbitant, you know, we have MATS already, but we'd have to have 12 hours' worth of staff from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM and a meal to provide it and the extra cleaning that would be, you know, needed. So there would be additional, you know, resources needed for that. Transportation is an additional resource, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, similar to the focus action plan, this plan, if council adopts it, it doesn't tie council into budgeting for these items. But what it probably will mean is that next year, when Housing Neighborhood Preservation puts together their budget, they'll request those things through the city manager's budget process and resources, pending available resources. These may be funded or may not be funded based on the priorities that we outlined in our initial budget conversations with council, starting in like October, November of next year. So the next steps really for us is really for us to get some, probably a public comment and bring this forward for council to adopt this, similar to how it was in 2017, probably next quarter. But adopting this does not tie council into a funding appropriation associated with this one. This still has to get vetted out by the merit of needs associated across municipal corporations.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary, Sabrina, then Rosemary.
I wanted to ask, because there are some folks who are watching, and the question is, if people are not registered in the HRC and they're homeless, where do they go on the weekend?
We do not have services currently, but one of the action steps, the proposals in the plan, was to expand for weekend services because of that. But currently, we don't have a place. The city does not provide services. We have a nonprofit provider that does, that Penn Ministries just provides weekend services at the oceanfront.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Rosemary?
I just wanted to mention, as great as this is, how nicely it really ties into the mayor's hope initiative that works with personal, mental, and physical health. I think it's a nice, it's a nice connection.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll tell you what, this has been a magnificent, you know, presentation that, you know, the fact is, we have been doing much over for a very, very long time now. And if you want to really go to a very touching and emotional ceremony that HRC has at the beginning of winter, and we have there a candlelight vigil and a reading outside for the individuals, the homeless that did not survive. You know, I would invite everybody to come to really hone in on the situation and see if, you know, from a reality perspective. But once again, I think that We For a City, over a long time now, has been really confronting this head-on and kudos, you know, to the staff for what they do. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, the last presentation of the day was presented by our Director of Human Services, like the two previous, the housing study and the homeless plan. These were focus action plan items. This is another focus action plan item. And it was a request that we relay to council the state of mental health in Virginia Beach.
And after this presentation, we'll take a break before we continue.
So, Ma'am, the next voice you hear is Director Allen Smith kicking off the presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. Well, Ruthie's was so interesting and I do have a play into that as well. So you're going to hear a little bit about what we do as well for homeless population. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, City Manager, and Dana. I have many staff here and I also have our board chair, Dr. Joyce Harvey, right there. So she'll wave to you for the CSB. The staff members put in a lot of work on this presentation and mainly Angie Hicks. So I want to recognize her. Wave your hand, Angie, if you could. She's our Behavioral Health Developmental Services Deputy Director. And it's not only about doing a presentation, pulling it together, doing some research. It's also about everything she does every day. And so she is innovating, you know, rising against the challenges and making a difference every day with clients and the services that we provide. And I just want to recognize her and say thank you. Okay, so this is a state of mental health presentation. And as mentioned, it's the Focus Action Plan Initiative 3.2. I'm going to be talking about some very serious subjects, suicide, overdoses. This may not be a subject that everybody would like to hear who's viewing. So I do want to recognize that, that this could bring up some trauma for folks who may be in an active grief over a family member or a friend who has passed away. And they may want to just view an archived session of this if they're not ready to hear this information. Because I'm going to be showing you some statistics that are pretty sobering. All right, our first slide is what I call a circle of support. So as you can see here on this slide, Human Services is just one of the bubbles. We're your public provider for mental health services and substance use services. We are not the We are not the total provider in your community. We have 42 private providers that are in Virginia Beach and in this area. We also have NAMI Coastal, who hopes to advocate for, who advocates for folks who have mental health issues. We have the Health Department. Dr. Padati is here, joining us today and supporting us. Police, EMS, courts, government, everyone from you, all the way up to the governor, is supporting mental health services with various aspects of funding that come down through the state for us and for our services. Family and friends are incredibly important. Natural supports are very important for this population to help them get into services. Hospital systems, we have great private hospital systems in this community. And of course, housing that was just up here. Services for mental health and substance use are voluntary, for the most part. Sometimes they become involuntary if a person is at imminent risk to themselves or to others. But for the most part, it's voluntary. So they have to be encouraged to come to services. And that's where all these players, you know, play in and give them the support that they need to provide services or to go to services. Okay, so what are some of our major issues impacting behavioral health? One, you have heard from me on workforce shortage. It's not just our department that has a shortage of staff members to do this work, this hard work. It is the private providers in our community. It is across the state, the state hospitals and other hospital associations. Just everywhere, the workforce shortage is affecting the work that we do. And we're all vying for the same individuals who may be licensed or physicians. I'm going to tell you a little bit about some statistics related to physicians soon. But we've done some innovative things in the city, thanks to you. We have done a bonus program where people can get a bonus coming on. We have certain positions that get a stipend, mainly the ones that have to have certifications or their licensure done every year. We're trying to make sure that we are very competitive, not only with this community, but also with other CSBs in the area. So we're all trying to get the staff members to come work for us that are talented and want to do this work because it's got to be in your heart. Access to services has been difficult and challenging. As many of you know, because you may have heard from constituents, we're having an issue with getting a hospital bed if somebody is at that level, where they need a hospital bed or they have involuntary commitment, where they have to be hospitalized. We use the state, Eastern State Hospital, as our safety net. But sometimes we can't even get those beds. So we have done, and Hutch is shaking his head because he knows this firsthand as well. We have done a lot to try to improve this and work with the hospitals to get folks in faster. But what we're finding over the last five years is that people are waiting longer for beds. Sometimes they wait 72 to 96 hours for a hospital bed. And they're in emergency rooms. So a lot of work going on behind the scenes with the emergency room physicians and hospital association. The opiate crisis, we're going to talk about that a little later in the program, or in the presentation. But the opiate crisis has been profound across the nation, across actually the world. We have felt it greatly. Fentanyl is something that has come into the communities, is affecting our children, our youth. They're not knowing what they're taking sometimes. It is incredibly deadly. So that is one aspect of our work that has compounded what we're doing. And about anywhere from 75% to 80% of our clients have a co-occurring issue. So they have a mental health issue as well as a substance use issue. So we're working on both fronts to try to help them with all the services that we can. Homelessness and affordable housing. I won't go into that so much because you just heard two hours of it. So, but we face it as well. Our clients face it. And so we are getting some more slots for permanent supportive housing for our clientele who have mental health issues. It's very important that we get them into housing because, as you know, that structure underneath them is how they're going to be stable in the community. If you don't have a house, and you don't have food, and you don't have any kind of healthcare, you're going to be unstable. And so that's, that's one of the things that we're always trying to do, is make sure they have a house or a place to live. Stigma, stigma still plays a part. Some people do not want to admit they have a mental health issue or a substance use issue. So stigma is still there in our community. And we work very hard to try to, and especially with NAMI, to try to advocate for others who have a mental health issue to come into services and get what they need. Okay, so this is on the workforce shortage. So I have a slide for most of the subject matter that I just mentioned. The workforce shortage, as I mentioned, is incredible. A large number of our mental health professionals are at or nearing retirement age. This statistic right here is very important. 61% of our psychiatrists in this nation are 55 years or older, 61%. So what is that going to mean in the future? We really need to be having more and more graduates come out. But it is not that many that are coming out that are interested, especially in public service. So we're very fortunate to have Dr. Leone and Dr. Senz on with us. But we only have two psychiatrists. We really should have a lot more than that for a city our size. And we are constantly trying to hire. So we have other positions, two other vacant positions, but we have not been able to hire them yet. The National Center for Workforce Analysis projects that over the next 15 years, shortages will include 69,610 mental health counselors, 87,630 addiction counselors, and 42,130 psychiatrists. So just think about that. And think about all that you're hearing from your constituents about mental health, timelines to get services, access to services, and look at the shortage that we're facing. So in DHS, in our Human Services Department, we have 75 vacancies across 16 program areas. And you can see here, 33% of our behavioral health nursing positions are vacant, six of 18. 50% of our psychiatry, like I just mentioned, two of four. And 57% of our nurse practitioners are vacancies, four of seven. Our source here is Virginia Healthcare Foundation. Okay, so what are some strategies? We have a very flexible workplace in Human Services across different programs. But there are a lot of positions where they need to be in the office to see the clients. So people do telework in Human Services, but they also come into the office and see individuals as they need to, or out in the community. We have telehealth options. So you can get a telehealth appointment, just like you would with your normal medical provider. We have stipends for some hard-to-fill positions. An example of this would be for our prescreeners. That is a mandated service. During the pandemic, we were approximately 50% vacant in that area. So we had to implement a stipend for that position. That's an example. Hiring bonuses, just like everybody else. Everyone else in the community is doing hiring bonuses. There was no way we could not do hiring bonuses and be competitive. So thank you very much to all of you and our City Manager and our Deputy City Manager for supporting that. We do job fairs, of course, always trying to entice folks to come work for us, show us what a great place it is here in the City of Virginia Beach to work. And we do get some from the job fairs. Student engagement, we're trying to engage not only college-age, but high school-age. Are you interested in this? We went to the official for a day, had a very interesting conversation at our table about vaping with those students, you know, it was very interesting. And so it was, those are the type of places that we need to go. We need to engage a younger population to be interested in the future. Internships and residencies, of course. Now, state, the state stuff is coming out rapidly right now with the changes that we're seeing with some bills, with the budget coming. So they're looking at participation in compacts for licensed behavioral health professionals across state lines. I'm kind of ashamed to say Virginia hasn't done this already. They should have already done this. This is for your licensed staff members, as well as your nurse practitioners. So many other states do that. It's transferable to another state if you are licensed. So we're getting now on board with that. Paid internships, loan repayments and scholarships. Clinical supervision hours required for licensure is a lot, thousands of hours. They cost a lot of money. So the state is looking at how they might do some of that. And increasing compensation. Okay, so the state of mental health in America. 21% of adults who are experiencing a mental illness, out of that group, 55% do not receive treatment. Okay, 21% are experiencing mental illness, and 55% do not choose treatment. 15% of adults, and this is coming from your state, your Mental Health America annual report again, 15% of adults have a substance use disorder, and the majority do not receive treatment, 93%, little over. 16% of youth have at least one major depressive episode in the past year, and 60% did not receive treatment. There are 350 individuals who need mental health care for every provider in America. And look at Virginia, 480 for every person who needs care, 480 to one mental health provider. That's staggering. Okay, so some of this, now that I'm going to move into these slides for you, came from the Health Department. And I want to thank Dr. Padati for sending me some information. We were piecing it together, but the Health Department has the best information and the most recent that we could find as well. So as you could see here, self-harm and suicide-related ER visits. And the latest year we could get was 2021. So in Virginia Beach, it looks like we have about 578, on average, for the year, visits to an ER related to self-harm and suicide. In the state of Virginia, it's about 680. So we're a little bit under that average in the city. Deaths by suicide. And this number is per 100,000 for your population. So it would be a little bit more like 73 suicides in 2020 and 69 in 2021 for the City of Virginia Beach. And then you can see where we rank with Virginia and with the United States, which is very, very close, actually, very close. Drug overdose and hospitalizations. So per, again, 100,000 population, which means this is more than 87. It's the 393 number. That's how many drug overdose hospitalizations we have in the City of Virginia Beach. And across the state, of course, it's a lot more. It's 7,725. A huge number, huge number of overdoses and self-harm and things related to mental health. And then you think back to the provider shortage. And you think back to what's coming in terms of the provider shortage. Very serious. So Virginia Beach continues, of course, to experience the opioid epidemic. The COVID pandemic increased isolation and impacted substance use rates. What we found when we gathered some information is that, and I believe it was from the National Institute of Healthcare Management, this research, is that anxiety disorders during COVID went up 79% and depression 66%. And when we talked to our providers in Human Services, they were saying they're seeing the same thing. That, of course, when you're isolated, you have exacerbated symptoms. And if you have a mental health issue that's not taken care of or a substance use issue that's not being addressed, it is become, it becomes more exacerbated. So although our overdose rate for Virginia Beach is slightly below the state average, it's still very concerning. And here it is. So this slide actually shows you the progression from 2001 to 2020. And you can see it's just going straight up. And a part of that is the pandemic. There was a lot of substance use that occurred, increased substance use that occurred during the pandemic. But this is showing you where we are in relation to Virginia. And I can tell you the national look is the same thing. It's the same type of progression. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about fentanyl. Although Virginia Beach is in the green there, about the third over, none of it, no one should be proud about anything related to this. This is serious, serious, serious. So when fentanyl came onto the streets and we started to hear about it, we were hearing things like, in one little dose, it was killing people. We're still hearing that. But now what we're hearing is some very creative ways that they are getting fentanyl into other what kids think or youth think or even an adult thinks is like a gummy, a piece of candy, something that they don't know that they're taking. So you're going to hear later how we try to help people to understand what they're taking. If you're going to take a substance, there is such a thing called a fentanyl strip, where you can crush down that substance and you can test it to see if fentanyl is in there. Because people don't know what they're taking, and they're dying the first time they take it. That has happened recently, where two kids were offered gummies. And we know about this from our Child and Youth Department, who has some of the families that come in. And one of them didn't take it, and the other one did, and he passed away, first time. We don't encounter these folks because they don't even come in for treatment. They're passing away in our community, but they're not even getting those before we can intervene or do something. So the death rate for fentanyl is going up, just like the other statistics that I was showing you. Revive training, I do want to talk about that for a second. Revive training is where you use the naloxone to reverse an overdose. And we actually do a lot of this. So we distributed in 2022, 309 naloxone products. And then in 2023, it was 680, so it was more. And that's the nasal that we use to distribute. And we also train while we're distributing that. And 22 staff in Human Services help to do this in the community. We did nine revive trainings in '22 and 20 in '23. So this is a little bit now that I'm going to go into with what your Human Services Department does to help. And again, we're the public entity. So we serve somewhere in the range of 7,000, about 7,240, as I believe, the statistics from this chart. We don't serve everybody. There's a lot of other providers that we don't see because they have insurance, the person has insurance, and they go to a private provider. So what does our population look like in your public agency for mental health? On average?
The ones that are suffering with the most severe impacts with mental illness as well. So the level of care that your folks have to provide is probably significantly more than what other folks have to provide, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So we tend to get the folks that are the most seriously mentally ill that we see. 53% of our population has Medicaid. 37% have no insurance at all. Another 10% may have some sort of commercial insurance. So we're seeing a lot of uninsured people in Human Services. And then we have a great number of Medicaid as well. So males, on average, is about 58% of whom serve, and 41 for females there. And you see here between the ages of 21 and 64, that's the greatest population that we serve. That's the largest population, at 65%. 51% are white, 39% are African-American, and then we have Asian and other. Okay, so what do we do in our continuum of services? Yes, sir, sure.
That 21 to 64 age, I just noticed that's like the largest kind of gap. There's like 40, 40-year span there. Where is the other one? Well, maybe not, I guess. Is it 20 to 30 relatively the same as the 40 to, like, what's that thing look like? I'm sorry to even ask that question.
Yeah, we're missing that age, aren't we there? Yeah, okay. So the reason that it's so big is because a lot of our population are coming into adulthood. We have a lot of like 24-year-olds, 25-year-olds, right up through the mid-30s. However, and I'm not sure if I'm 100% understanding your question. I just think that you could see here, we do some services for 0 to 17, which is a much smaller population. The majority of our folks are not senior citizens, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, no, I was just kind of trying to figure that out a little bit, and you've answered it. But it's a pretty wide age gap.
Yeah, but I mean, that is 21 to 64, so it is mainly your adult.
I was thinking from off of that, isn't it, wouldn't it be better, just for statistical to look at it, is 21 to 40 and then 40 to 60, something so that you could just see if there's a big difference?
Certainly, certainly.
Sorry.
We can actually provide that to you.
No worries.
And probably it was because what fit in that one loop. And probably it was because what fit in that one loop. One of the truth is, it's a little hard. It's been everything in the blocks. So, okay, so how does our continuum work? And I'm going to talk about each of these, so I'm not going to hit on this slide that so much right now, because you can see what's under prevention and community awareness, what we consider early intervention, accessible treatment, and psychosocial stabilization and recovery. Each of these is going to have a slide, so I'm just going to move right into it. Okay, first, let me talk about homeless outreach. That's my first slide. And both Ruthie and Pam came up here and talked about the team that they have, that is four members. And then we talked a little bit about how police plays into that and how other parts of the city plays into that, what we also do as well. So we have two staff members, what are called our PATH staff members, which is projects for assistance in transition from homelessness. We're hoping to hire two more from state funding, that is one-time funding, but mainly grant funding under ARPA. So we have been given enough funds to hire two more to help with the counts that we do, where we're involved with the counts here, but also how we outreach, together with the Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Department. And for two people to do two thousand outreach activities in a year, that's pretty big. They're out there a lot on the streets, trying to help people understand services, get into services. Fifty-seven came into PATH, and forty-three are active with our Behavioral Health Services. And, but they always want to increase that number. Of course, they're doing Narcan, they're providing Narcan not only to businesses, but also to those individuals. And again, it's the nasal form of that. And it was provided to fifty-four homeless individuals. Okay. So here's some of our PATH community connections. And I won't read each one, you can see them here. We are involved, just as Ruthie mentioned and Pam mentioned, with all the same type of resources and other departments in the city, and other private providers, and overall advocacy agencies. So they're there. Okay, so what do we do in the prevention and community awareness arena? So this past year, we also have been working on not only community trainings and public events and media campaigns, and the HOPE event. We had staff members at the HOPE event last week or the week before. But we've also done what's called virtual walkthrough videos in behavioral health in the youth area, in the adult area, and also the Developmental Services area. And with these videos, it's going to show, once we get them out into the public arena, and we're going to roll them out to our board next Friday or this Friday. But it's going to show you how easy it is to get into services, and how welcoming we are to get into services, and to kind of take down a little bit of the stigma of getting into services. And so we're real proud of these videos. Our communications coordinator, Sean Brown, worked with Angie and Stacy and the team to really pull these together. They're beautiful. So when you see them, you'll be very proud that we have those rolling. We also have in our prevention department, if you go to gas stations and you're watching the screen as you're pumping gas, you're going to see something on marijuana and THC, and that's also our prevention department. So we're out there as much as possible in the community, doing our marketing, and explaining to folks how it's easy to get into our services if they want them. Some of the training events that we do here are listed. We do a lot of suicide prevention, as well as substance abuse prevention. Some of these trainings, such as QPR is one hour, Safe Talk is four hours, and the Shadow of Silence is actually an annual regional event. Revive trainings, I've mentioned those. That's where we give out the naloxone and train you on how to use it. We do a lot for youth, not only at the Renaissance, for the children who may have, or the youth who may have violated the school's policy. We do a group for them, which is actually ten days and thirty hours' worth of intervention and training. But we also do other education things in the community for youth. We do merchant education, that's what Counter Tools is. We did three hundred and sixty-five different merchants over the last year. Help Me Understand Training is training for family members. We also do Adverse Childhood Experiences Training, which is letting folks understand the trauma of maybe that they experienced in childhood, and how that's relating to their mental health, as well as their substance use. And Lock and Talk is another one for merchants, where we're not only showing them or giving them the gun safety tools, the actual lock, but providing education on suicide awareness. And we have on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, from one to two, and you can register here at three eight five zero eight zero zero, suicide prevention for the public. So if you want to learn about just ongoing treatments, prevention strategies, and coping strategies, you can register for that. And it happens to be in this month. Okay, so nine eight eight. Nine eight eight is not new, but it is a national line that Virginia has started to use, where it's similar to nine one one. But nine eight eight is for a mental health crisis. So we are encouraging folks to use this line, although they still call nine one one sometimes. And we actually have a couple clinicians over at nine one one two evenings a week now to help with the staff members there, just kind of helping them guide to nine eight eight, as well as to other resources that we have. But this is a twenty-four-seven crisis counseling and resources. They get about seventeen hundred calls on average a month to this line in the region. Western Tidewater manages it, but then they help to, the company that actually does it, which is called Hope Link, refers out to the community providers. It is not just to CSBs or Behavioral Health authorities. They refer out to all the providers in the community. We do get to mobile crisis, probably in the region, probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred people a month that go to mobile crisis, which is where the crisis team will go out to. But on average, about seventeen hundred calls come into this line, and we're continuing to grow. It wasn't, of course, in the beginning, that many calls, but now it is. So this is good. This helps for folks to understand that they have a place to talk and not just nine one one. Okay, so what else do we do? Access to treatment. Same-day access means that you can get a clinical assessment and treatment the same day you walk in. So we encourage you to come in the morning. This is for both youth, as well as for adults. So if you hear someone who says, I'd really like to go into Human Services and try to get assessed, you can. Monday through Friday, encourage them, again, to come in the morning, and they could have an assessment. And then we are linking them with a provider within ten days of that. So they come in for an assessment, we assess what their needs are, and then we link them somewhere within our services within ten days. We did nine hundred and seventy adult assessments and two hundred and eighty-two youth assessments in 2023, and linked them not only to our own services, but to services across the community. A lot of them did come into our services. Some of the services we have listed here, such as psychiatric evaluation, medication management, we do therapy, we have nurses, we have an ACT team, which you may be familiar with what was called in the past a PACT team. This is a sort of community treatment. It's like a mental health team, somewhat like an emergency room on wheels. So we have seventeen members on that team. When they work with the clients, which is, we have anywhere between eighty and ninety clients, intensive clients, seriously mentally ill clients. And when they work with them, on the level that they work with them, which is any day of the week, they go, they go to their homes, they make sure they're taking their meds, get up. We have about a ninety-four, ninety-five percent rate of keeping them out of the hospital and out of jail. So it's a very intensive team, paid for by the state for the most part, and high frequency, high frequency. And they need that. And then they may transition to another service after they don't maybe need that level. We do counseling, as I've mentioned. We have a new peer drop-in center that is at the Pathways location. If you recall, Pathways, we had to close because we were not able to staff it, twenty-four-seven with nurses. So we've started a peer drop-in center there as of last November. We're also going to have outpatient, an intensive outpatient there. Just working through a little bit of the renovation still, but we do have the peer drop-in center right there. And a peer recovery warm line, which means you can call at any time and talk to a peer. Psychosocial stabilization and recovery, supportive services. So we also do this wide range of services in mental health. We have case management, where we'll help people to navigate their healthcare system, get their primary care visits in, go to their day program, get up and do things that they need to during the day. We coordinate care through that. And we also have Project Link, which is also a form of case management, but that's for your pregnant and parenting women and children, the women who have a substance use issue. Beach House is our day program, so we're at that program. We serve, on average, eighty people a day. Therapeutic environment to build skills, engage in social activities, and kind of be with other people, so they're not so isolated. We also do vocational services. We're very proud to say that we received a CARF accreditation, they come about every three years. Last CARF accreditation that we received, which was in twenty-two, December of twenty-two, the rating that they gave us was no recommendations, just some suggestions. To have no recommendations from an international accreditation agency means you're in the top five percent in the world. Yay! Let's hear it, let's hear it. That actually is incredible. That's incredible. So, and we do a lot of vocational services, not only for mental health, but also developmental services. Okay. Psychosocial stabilization and recovery. Okay, so this is permanent supportive housing. You were asked a little bit about that with Pam and with Ruth. We link people to housing resources for individuals with mental health, of course. We're engaging with the landlords. We have about thirty-five landlords who work with us to house folks. Here you can see the slots that we're getting from the state. So back in 2017, we only had fifty-two slots. Twenty eighteen, they started giving us more slots. Around 2021 and 2022, they started to say, Virginia Beach, you're doing a great job. We're recognizing it, we want to give you more slots. And so, of course, we're taking more slots because we can use them. So in 2022, we have now a hundred and twenty-two slots, and in 2023, we're going to, or we have a hundred and forty-two slots, which eventually we're even going to get more, which is over time, a hundred and seventy-three percent growth in our slots. And it is because of the team that is doing that work, and the remarkable work that they're doing with the landlords to keep these folks housed. About ninety-five percent of the folks that we house are stable in their housing. Adult correctional services. What are we doing with the jail? A lot. We do screening assessments in the jail. We also do education and prevention in the jail. We work weekly with their medical provider in the jail to make sure we're talking about the folks who need help, and that we're engaging them in help, and doing also transition planning for when they're leaving jail, to how they come into our services. We have a drug court, where we serve a lower amount of folks, about fourteen a year. Mental health case management. We're doing an early diversion initiative now with the courts, in General District Court, where we're actually at the arraignments and working at the bond hearing to try to do an assessment as soon as someone goes into jail, so we can make some recommendations on what might be beneficial. And then maybe they can bond them out, and they can go into services, as opposed to jail. That's, we're getting some very good reviews back from the judges on that. We did nineteen hundred and twenty mental health screenings. There were about fifteen hundred and eighty-five inmates in the jail that were eligible, but not everybody wants our services. Again, even, it's voluntary. So about three hundred and twenty-six, or on average, a little over three hundred and fifty are in our services, and then we help to transition them back out into the community. We link them to benefits, we get them a supply of medication, housing, and engage them in our services and post-release. Okay. What are we doing for youth? The Rapid Response Program, which I believe we've talked to you about before, did launch in February 2023, so a year ago. We've received nineteen, or ninety-two referrals in the first four months, and a hundred and thirty-one since then. We're in forty of your elementary schools out of fifty-five that we've been called into for this program. And what we do is, we go in, we encourage the family to go through our assessment process, look at what might be beneficial to that child, engage them early on. And we're expanding to pre-K next week. So that's excellent. We're doing parent-child interaction therapy in our Child and Youth Clinic. We have almost fully renovated the rooms. And, but at this point, we have two rooms that are under construction. This is a program for ages two through seven. And what happens is, and I may have mentioned this with you all, is we give the parents a little earpiece, and the clinician is talking to them as they're working with their child in that room. So when the child has an explosive episode or is challenging with their behaviors, the clinician can talk them through it and say what to do, as opposed to scream and yell and elevate things. We're also going to start doing some outpatient services in the high schools. We have not been able to hire those licensed clinicians yet, but we will. Okay. So right now, as you know, back in, I want to say, April of last year, we came to you and we talked about our direct distribution of opiate abatement funds. Since that time, and based on your input, we did a lot of town halls and a lot of community engagement. So we did seven town halls. One of them was very large at the convention center, one was virtual, and the other five were in districts. So we combined two districts, did one in each district. And we listened to the community through those events. But we also did well over forty more meetings and engagement opportunities with other agencies to get input from them. We also had a hundred and twenty-three surveys, which we got from the community. What did they say were their areas of concern that we needed to work on as a cooperative in this region? So this is the next bunch of money that we're going for from the cooperative, I mean, from the OAA. So they said we needed access to services, consolidation of services, and transportation of services. So the next slide shows you what the five cities worked for this past year to pull together. And we also worked with Centerra Healthcare. So five cities, Chesapeake, Suffolk, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and Centerra were working together to decide, hey, how do we meet that need? They don't have transportation, they want access to services, and they want their services consolidated. Well, Centerra actually is pretty much expert at doing vans that roll around the communities that have medical providers in them. So you can get your physical in there, and you can get, just basically, your medical care taken care of. Well, now we're going to add in to this van that we propose across five cities, clinical assessments, prevention education, the naloxone distribution. We can go out to communities that can't reach us with this van. We can do counseling, peer support, telehealth. Anything can be tailored to the community. Each of us will get the van for one day a week. So if we have an event that we are doing, say Parks After Dark or something like that, and we want to bring the van to that, we schedule it with the other five cities and bring the van in to do the medical, as well as substance use education and other aspects of healthcare. The budget that we're going to ask for from the OAA that will be proposed is a little over a million dollars. For a little over a million dollars, this is going to be incredible, incredible, to have this mobile access that's not only physical health, but it's mental health. Centerra is contributing the first two hundred and fifty thousand. We're contributing ten thousand in the first year, but we will be providing future match over time for this. And the annual application, you have to do one a year. It is actually due in April, April first. So we have been meeting weekly on this to get this application done. And our finance team is actually, the city of Virginia Beach is the fiscal agent for the region. Okay. Another thing that's on the radar that you may be hearing about through the Governor's Right Help Right Now proposal is a commitment to crisis services in Virginia. What we're looking at is a crisis receiving center. We're also working with our partners, because they want to do kind of a crisis psychiatric center. So we're trying to work with both the private provider, hospital associations in this area, and look at how we might develop strategies to implement a crisis receiving center. It would, this crisis receiving center would be twenty-four, twenty-three hours. It would be open twenty-four hours, but it would be a twenty-three-hour assessment, support to a person who's having a crisis. Police could bring someone there, do a warm handoff to that center, not have to stay with them for hours and hours and hours if they don't need that level of care that would require an acute bed. I'm starting to like, need some water here. Been up here a little while. So the center in Virginia Beach, oh, I do have one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I brought one. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Hello, hello? Okay, one testing, one, two, three. Okay, one testing, one, two, three. Okay, sorry about that. The center in Virginia Beach, of course, we have no, no plans right now as to where it would be, but we want to partner with our other partners to make sure that it wouldn't require a lot of travel, that we wouldn't have the police running all over the city as they're doing now to try to take people to emergency rooms and all of that. So this is on the cusp. This is something we'll give you a staff report about, but we wanted to make sure that you knew that we are looking at this and going to be working towards this in our city. And I think I'm at the end. No, I'm not. One more slide. One more. Okay, so where are we going? We're gonna finalize and implement the opiate abatement strategies with our community partners. We're gonna continue to work with human resources on recruitment strategies. We've been doing that for years. Coordinate with our state and local partners on various levels of crisis response and continuously enhance community awareness strategies via our prevention and outreach services. And we're gonna expand permanent supportive housing and partner with other city departments and agencies in the community. And that's it.
Hey, thank you. You get the Endurance Award today. That was great stuff. Michael.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Smith, and to your entire team. I think the robustness of your presentation reflects the robustness of the challenge that we are experiencing in Virginia Beach and throughout the country. Many people have said that we are experiencing a mental health crisis, and the figures that you presented today demonstrated, I won't go back and, and quote them, but they demonstrate that we are, in fact, experiencing a mental health crisis. And the effect is one that is very detrimental to individuals and to families and to our community more broadly. I'm particularly grateful that you had the statistics about death by suicide because that's something that I've been seeking as part of some of the other conversations that we've had, and I'm glad to know that you have it and where Virginia Beach stands. And I think the public deserves to have a better sense of the gravity of that situation as well. A couple of things that I guess I just have some questions about, or at least one question and then, and then one statement that I want to draw it out, draw out. The last kind of issue on the horizon is about expanding permanent supportive housing. And I just want to remind the body and the community that we do have a plan. It's one plan. It's not the plan, but there is a concept that's been proposed and established and discussed to move forward, both expanded mental health services with NAMI as well as to provide for more permanent supportive housing units for people who live with mental illness. And I think we, not only, you know, that relates to our affordable housing discussion, my opinion is that we need to move forward with that plan. Let's advance the discussions about that plan so we can deliver the things that we need. Affordable affordability in housing and also permanent supportive housing for people who live with mental illness, as well as expanding program space and resources that would be available through NAMI relocating their regional coastal Virginia headquarters into that space. That will provide those, you know, peer-led services at a retail level that would really expand availability for access to services throughout Virginia Beach and also for the entire region will position Virginia Beach as a leader in this area. So I just want to make sure we know that we have something teed up that will deliver on many of these things, and it's just up to us to advance it. But lastly, how can the city, I think one of the challenges that I've experienced in this space is how the city interacts with, and when I say the city, I don't only mean your department, but your department and the city organization as a whole interacts with nonprofit and community partners and, and mental health providers. It's kind of a continuum, and you noted that, you know, the city is one part of it, and then there's private sector providers, and then there's, there's the nonprofit providers, and then there's the, the support, you know, people that provide supports like NAMI. It feels like sometimes there's a disconnect between all those things, and do you have any thoughts on that or? And I'm not bringing that up to say that I think the disconnect is an issue with your office. I'm just curious, in your observations, have you noticed that and how do you think that landscape could be improved?
I think, I would say in the past, it was really very difficult sometimes to find out what everyone is doing and get on the same page. But I will tell you, I feel a sea change in that. I feel that a lot has gone on recently to include how we partner with the private hospitals and VBPC, Virginia Beach Psychiatric Center, for those of you who don't know all the acronyms, as well as refer to private providers. We cannot do this alone. And as I mentioned to you, we tend to serve Medicaid, fifty-three percent, or uninsured at thirty-seven percent, and then another ten percent is just your commercial insurance. But we have to rely on the private partnerships that we have. And so a lot of what the prevention team does and the behavioral health team does is go out there and meet and talk about what each are doing. What are you doing to support mental health or substance use services? And what can we do to help? And try not to duplicate as much. Some things are duplicative, but not everything. And so there is a lot of conversations around that. We have a lot of meetings in the community, even YCAT, which is our youth coalition under prevention. They talk about how we're serving youth across the city. We're in the schools. We've been working with the schools on a lot of things, such as the Rapid Response Program, as well as now putting two outpatient clinicians in the high schools. In the past, the door wasn't always open for that. The doors are opening. Everyone sees the need. Everyone wants to be a part of the solutions and how we're there to help other people in their total wellness, not just medical, but mental health as well.
Sorry, one quick follow-up, if I may. So I've spent some time in the General Assembly during this session with NAMI and other mental health advocates, and I'm aware that there's unprecedented, unprecedented and historic investments in mental health services that are advanced, have advanced. I don't know exactly where that landed in the budget, so I don't want to put you on the spot if you're not prepared to talk about that, but I was just curious, kind of, if you could share, where are we, you know, you did kind of talk about some of the things with the improvements that have occurred. I forget exactly what chart that was, but what are your thoughts on what happened during the General Assembly and where we are in the budget and how would that impact Virginia Beach?
So the General Assembly, it was historic, especially in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three with this Right Help Right Now, right? A big portion of that, over three-hundred million dollars, was going to developmental services waiver slots. But then other pockets of that and other portions of that are going towards mental health, whether it's from our increasing compensation potential in CSPs, which is just about seven-point-five million over the next two years, about fifteen million total, or these crisis receiving centers. So there's money in the state coming down for us to do more crisis support. That is diversion from hospitalizations and diversion from other aspects of mental health care that the person may not need. They just may need some short-term crisis services or case management. So there is going to be some money coming down from the state, and we're, this is historic for us. We're thirty-eighth in the nation for funding and access to mental health. So we're still pretty low, and youth services and their access is even worse in terms of Virginia. So the governor has noticed this. Our commissioner for behavioral health and developmental services has noticed this, and all of the General Assembly has noticed this, and they're trying to do something to pull in resources and help us in the future with supporting services, and crisis receiving centers is just one of the options there.
Chris, did you have something, and then Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Mary. Thank you for the presentation, very in-depth, and it's, it's, it kind of hits close to home because I was just at a meeting this morning with someone that lost their stepson to fentanyl. And yesterday, I was with a group of eight fourth graders, and we talked about a topic I didn't see, which leads to a lot of mental concern, and that's bullying. And these eight fourth graders wrote the word bully at the top and then described what that meant to them. We had one of them that's already being called gay and homosexual. We had one that's experienced racism. We had others that are being bullied on a day-to-day basis, and, and some of their feedback was they, they're not, they don't feel like they're in fourth grade getting a lot of support. So it was, it was encouraging to see that you are trying to collaborate with the schools because that is a serious, serious concern, is bullying leads to depression, bullying leads to isolation. Looking at your state of mental health, it's, you clearly have a complex, challenging problem, especially when it relates to some of your statistics that they're in some of the more affluent communities. And so that stigma of coming out and acknowledging that, you know, it wasn't illness, it was an overdose, and then that gets into the criminalization part that some communities are reluctant to begin to arrest these drug dealers because everybody, it's not all accidents. Some of these people are just involved in illegal activity, and they're selling drugs in our communities. And I've had an opportunity to speak with the chief. So these are serious numbers, serious statistics. One of them concerning is the vacancies. How long have, have we had these vacancies?
It really depends. We may have filled them, and then they became vacant again. So clinical positions are really hard to fill. They're licensed, for the most part, a lot of the staff members. So we have seventy-seven or seventy-five at the present time, but as I said, they could have had a person in them a year ago, and now we have a vacancy again. So we're always in competition. We're always trying to retain our staff, which also goes back to that flexible work environment. And we've done a lot in compensation, trying to do bonuses as well as increase salaries. So I appreciate that.
They come in with altruistic ideas, and then they come to work for the city and the environment that they have to work for. And it's not necessarily the environment in terms of like a cultural thing, but the environment of working with hard-to-handle clients, and then they realize it's not something that they want to do, and then they go to the private sector. You know, so a lot of times, they bring in a lot of, they bring in a lot of employees, but the retention and keeping there, once a lot of times, folks realize what the job is, they want to go to things that are easier to manage, you know, physically and mentally.
And then lastly, Councilmember Blucchi brought up that we have a plan, and I've been sitting here fifteen months. I haven't seen a lot of details around the proposal he's mentioned. I know we had a closed session discussion, but I don't know if the public knows a lot about that proposal. Again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Clearly, there's a lot of diverse needs, and so maybe NAMI fits them all and solves all those problems, but I haven't seen this, this plan. So I would love, maybe the manager, if you could get permission from us or staff to bring that forward because I don't think we voted on anything. I think, I don't think we've had any really in-depth discussions. I know they've met with individuals.
Which plan are you talking about, sir?
Mr. Blucchi mentioned we have a plan.
We had a public briefing about the VBCC. We've already had a public briefing, Mr. Taylor.
Okay. All right, I'll be part of the public record.
Okay.
If you could get that in my Friday packet, because the people I'm speaking to in the community don't understand what our plan is and our strategy, and maybe one public meeting's not enough because clearly, Ms. Smith, from your presentation, I know there was some engagement, but one hundred and twenty-three people across four hundred thousand. Maybe we can continue to push that education because I think we can get more numbers of people to come out.
Oh, the surveys, you mean? Yes, yes. So it was hundreds more people actually came out to the town halls and to the other meetings. There were about fifty engagement activities that occurred over the last year. But yes, only one hundred and twenty-three surveys came in.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
My question was answered. It was about recruitment, retention. One, but to follow up, do you know, is there a pipeline even through colleges? Are people even wanting to come into the profession, let alone, once you're in there, you get burned out? But like to the intrigue, it's just, what is it looking like?
Well, we do, we do some internships where people can come intern with us and learn about it, and we also have some EVMS residents that come, usually one to two a year, that come in, and public service is different. City manager Duhany is, is right on. Private providers, a lot of them are working almost a hundred percent from their home. We don't do that. We're out in the community. We have people that we see in the office, same-day access, but we do have internships where they can come learn. And we've even been doing internships with high school students. About eight or nine high school students have been working with our adult community corrections department or program to see what they do. So the more we can do younger, the better that we're gonna be to engage our youth in wanting to do this type of work.
Patrick, and then Amelia.
Mr. May, I think Councilmember House was talking globally, not necessarily so much on your efforts, Ali, but I think she was trying to ask, are the schools producing enough people? And from my understanding, from talking to the local presidency, VMS, and ODU, and others that graduate, like schools of social work and things like that, and mental health, they're not, they don't have enough people who are coming into the programs that want to matriculate, and in those that matriculate, they do have choices, and a lot of times, they choose not to come work for private sector, but we're not enough people graduating with the degrees and the training necessary to do the work.
And it also takes a long time, I'm sorry, sir. It also takes a long time to get licensed. It's thousands of hours, thousands of supervised hours.
Amelia?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for what you've done because this, if you continue doing presentations like this, people will become more empathized. So this is serious, and it may be their cousin or some family member that they see the need to maybe go into this profession. So looking at the numbers.
Yes.
So it is shocking, and I'm glad you all are there working on it. I'm glad the board chair, who many years ago I recommended, Dr. Harvey, is still there out in the field helping with this. Thank you all for what you all are doing.
She's incredibly supportive.
Oh, yes.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for a detailed report, and thank you for hanging in there. I think our last three reports that we had today, you know, are at the core of a lot of what we are about as a city. And, you know, especially your point really highlights what was identified in a survey that, you know, you know, Dr. Ross Hammond had before she came back on council with the group, that mental health is the number-one concern in the city of Virginia Beach. And I harken back to a couple of years ago when we were talking to Governor Northam about getting the beaches open at the height of COVID. And we talked about protecting the vulnerable, but we all also talked about the collateral consequences of the isolation that was gonna go on. We're talking about anxiety, depression, suicide, drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and domestic abuse. And, you know, the governor, you know, you know, who is also a fellow healthcare person, said, okay, look, we're gonna let you go ahead and open the beaches, and we were able to provide some respite for people that were having a tough time during that time. And I remember back in the day where recreational drug use was a stigma. Now it's a commonality that, you know, society lives with. And then we also have the thing going on now where fentanyl is now coming into, you know, recreational drugs and as well as the gummies and everything else. And I was told not too long ago, and I think Rosemary, you might have been at the meeting with the school board place, folks, and they were talking about that there's an app now that students have that they can push a button and get drugs delivered to them. Yeah, you know, and, you know, I'll tell you what, it's a nationwide crisis we're having. And then in discussions with Children's Hospital, the King's Daughter, they just opened up a new, you know, adolescent, you know, mental health facility, and the age has dropped from adolescents all the way down, like, you know, Chris was talking about, you know, to kids in the fourth grade and everything where they're having, you know, crisis. You know, this is, this is something that we're gonna really have to wrestle with aggressively. But once again, you know, but you're bringing it to the forefront like this, and the manner you did was enlightening, and I sincerely appreciate your efforts.
Well, it was on the part of all of you who are interested and so supportive, so thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to council comments, anybody? Okay, Jennifer, Sabrina, Barbara. Okay, we'll go around the table.
So this is, I sent y'all an email a little before we got started this morning, but I wanted to give you a recap of the discussion from the Active Transportation Advisory Committee from yesterday to get your feedback on direction. So I'm gonna read this just so I don't miss any points. So yesterday, at the committee, we had a discussion about the sports tourism presentation and a suing discussion that took place at council last week, and there was a question about how we And there was a question about how we came to make our decision and the criteria that was used. So whether the idea actually had merit or whether it had alignment between the public and the operator and whatever had alignment is what we would go with. So as of right now, there's no competitive collegiate track for cross-country runners in Virginia Beach. So for college-level runners, the closest is Chesapeake. And then Newport News, high school runners are running at Kims, or excuse me, at Kellum High School in Williams Farm, either which were built for cross-country more, they just have the space and they're using it, but it's not ideal. So there are five plans that speak, five various plans that speak to the value of cross-country, but there is no master plan of the Princess Anne Commons area. So there was representatives from various departments at the meeting. So from an economic development perspective and from a parks and recreation perspective, there's support for a master planning of that area. From the economic development perspective, a master plan would be useful to identify and assess, for example, missed opportunities for shared parking in that area. From a parks and rec perspective, the PAC has existing supporting amenities like parking, bathroom, and maintenance facility and staff to support a cross-country track. So one of the lingering questions is, because we're investing $18 million, one of the questions is, have the operators been presented with the second recommendation that we were presented with? And do they agree that those are also the priorities? So option one had all the requests. Option two had amended requests. And it may be that the operators may not have put on option two the request that, I guess, the person from, who prepared to study what they recommended. So wanting to make sure that the operators have an opportunity to look at those recommendations before moving forward.
The thing I'll just say is there's way more needs than resources, right? So nobody's needs, nobody's desires are going to be met if you use any of the options, right? You're not going to be 100% met, right? Soccer complex needs are not going to be met. Sports flex needs are not going to be met. PAC needs are not going to be met, you know, if you do that. And that's, I think, the difficulty associated with this is that when we, council had on the spot that they wanted us to put funds towards the current facilities, right? You know, initially, when Victus started the presentation, it was about what new opportunities we should explore for sports tourism. And council was like, hey, we got too many other needs to think about, to explore some new obligation in the future. Let's think about recapitalizing and putting funds into our current facilities. And then it's probably $40 million worth of requests and only $18.9 million. And I don't think there's an appetite unless council wants to go in that direction to add additional funds there. So that Victus was stuck in a situation where they're trying to figure out how best to spread those finite resources across all those different groups, right? So some of the operators asked are included in that. Not all of them are included in that.
I just wanted a comment on that. You mentioned master plan, and that's sort of the key word that I've been working on for years and haven't gotten there. But that area just cries for a master plan. I mean, certainly not talking about building anything immediately, but just to make sure we keep that long-range plan in the right direction so we don't overlook things or do something that, keep something else from being able to be built. And that area is so in need of a master plan because I think we can, we can maybe be more, we can, we can partner some things that maybe work together that we wouldn't otherwise do. But when you're talking about, for example, the trails, which of course would also be something like the cross-country, they can be worked into these other things as a, very easily. And so just having a master plan for that area, I think would be such a big.
Okay, Sabrina.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the public of two town hall meetings that will take place tomorrow. The first one I mentioned last weekend, that's the first town hall for the ICRB that will take place at Ebenezer Baptist Church tomorrow. They start, I believe, at 6:00. So make sure that if you can attend, you go out and meet the ICRB staff and members. Also, I will be hosting over at Building 19 in the municipal center, a collective bargaining town hall. And that meeting will start at 6:30. So all are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Barbara.
I should have been saying this for the past two or three weeks, but forgotten it each time. Not this weekend, but next weekend, March 22nd and 23rd, is the Great American Cleanup Date. And at this late date, we wouldn't be able to do much more than just send out an encouragement to our neighborhoods to maybe do some neighborhood cleanup during that weekend because that's going to be the time when everybody in the country is going to be looking at spring cleaning. And I think it would be good if we participate in some fashion, even though at this late date, it's not real organized. But if we could just let our neighbors, neighborhoods, know that this is the time and maybe they can do a little bit of encouragement and get some of the litter picked up.
Rosemary and then Amelia and then Chris.
Okay, two things. Friday night, this is the night for, the week for town hall meetings, we're going to have one, the human trafficking, we're having a human trafficking summit. It's going to be at the Filipino Cultural Center Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00. And we're having Tanya Ghul from the Attorney General's Office there as well as Delegate Anne Friel Teta and then some other people that will be part of the panel from the police. The other thing I wanted to mention, I'm sure you've all been hearing about Dominion Energy and Croatan. It's really interesting because Croatan, neighbors had not really reached out to me until like yesterday. And I called our government affairs person from Dominion and talked to her about it. And I did tell her that after dealing with Amazon and the huge building that's going on there and this, what a great job Amazon had done. We've been having meetings every 60 days. They made themselves available. Here's my card, here's my phone, if you have a problem. And they're showing up, if people call, they show up within an hour to their homes to work through whatever issues people are having. And I'm a little disappointed that Dominion has not been as responsive as, as they could have been. But I will say, since our phone call yesterday, they are, they're sending out a letter to everybody in Croatan with plans to mitigate what their concerns are, which is, which I know you've heard noise, lights, vibrations. What else? Oh, debris on the beach, stuff on the beach. So they're going to be addressing that. And they are now looking for a place so we can have a community meeting, so we can meet with, with the neighbors and the community. So I was disappointed that they didn't do this earlier, but they are doing it now, which is, which is good. And we can all learn from each other with this. But I, I do applaud them for trying to make it better. And I think one of the problems is I don't think anybody realized how bad it was going to be. I just don't think this drilling and the noise and the vibration. If you think, with Dominion, is this really bad? It would kind of give you an idea what Avangrid is going to be like. And I don't think this horizontal drilling, when we've been hearing about it, no one knew the impact that it was going to be having with the, with the noise. And then people say that, you know, that their houses are shaking. And during, it's, and it's going on 24/7. You know, they, they hear it all during the night. There are people having trouble sleeping. And so Dominion is going to have to do some things to mitigate this. But at least now, I think we've got their attention and they're going to start helping us.
Okay, Amelia.
Oh, I was just going to comment. I think that maybe they had emphasized that area that they were doing the tree removal in and had overlooked the impact that it was going to have on Croatan, which is unfortunate. But it does really show what could happen in another location that we've been talking about. But I have, to this point, not gotten a single complaint about the tree removal. And I thought we were going to really hear from that. But I think they did a great job and let the people know what was going to happen that. And of course, we're talking about the mitigation. So they've worked at it hard, but they did maybe overlook that part.
Okay, Amelia.
This is from last Friday for the minority businesses. I thought it'd be interesting for you to hear that the city contracting spend amounted to $375 million. And the overall city spend, they shared with us how much was spent for architect, construction, goods and services. But a total for the minority women-owned businesses and veterans, they had minority-owned 50 million plus, 13.3%. Women-owned 51, 350, 13.7%. Veterans-owned 4 million. And majority-owned 269 million. But the final takeaway, there's lots more, but I'll just jump to the final takeaway, which is good. During, before the disparity study, the aspirational goal for minority-owned businesses was 12% of a total spent in the city contracting dollars. For year 21, it was 10%. For year 22, 12.4 they achieved. And for year 23, 13.4%, which is far exceeding what they had. And for the women, for year 21 was 12.8%. For year 22, 13.6. And for year 23, 13.7%. So the city aspirational goals were exceeded. And I think that is great news.
Very good news. It was 10%.
Yeah, it was 10.
Chris and then Josh.
Thank you very much. Comment in response to Councilwoman Rouse. I had actually received a call last night about the track. And I think it's a valid point. We have a lot of cross-country teams. I just don't know if that was part of that discussion. But it did, someone did reach out last night. So I just wanted to mention it is kind of getting around the town. And then a comment tomorrow, Thursday, we have the second iteration of Culture Meets Commerce at the Zider Theater. Mr. Zider will be present. Excited about that. That's from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Zider Theater in Town Center.
When against?
Thursday, 5:00 to 7:00. And then to Vice Mayor's point, I did reach out to the city attorney to make sure I could comment about it. But we did receive a memo on Friday about being re-approached by Avangrid. And I think the public should know that eventually we will be discussing that. I don't know if that's closed or open because it's public knowledge. But I know we took a position, Mayor Dyer. In December, we communicated that position. And it was a little surprised to see that memo. They're, they're free to do whatever they want. But if it's coming back, I think we do owe it to the residents of Virginia Beach, specifically those residents in Sandbridge, to, to have this in a public manner. Because their second memo is pretty direct of what they want to do. And we did take that public stance. I just don't want to be put in a position where we're going in an opposite direction.
No, and I concur with you. And they actually took out a full-page ad in the paper on Sunday. You know, but once again, you know, it's, I think the conflict is going to become, how many projects like this can we afford to have? And they're, they're saying they want 12,000 employees. Where are we going to get them from when we have trouble right now? You know, you know, let's, you know, we can talk about that. But thank you for bringing it up. Okay, Josh.
I had my question, or kind of addressed by somebody else. I'm all. Mayor, I just wanted to share that next Wednesday, on the 20th, I think it's a Wednesday, 20th, I'll be hosting a Public Safety Forum, Public Safety Forum with representatives from the various public safety agencies as we go into the budget cycle. And just as a continued community conversation, public safety is instrumental to the subjects we discussed today and just to general quality of life in Virginia Beach. So I just want to invite everyone to attend that. It's the Boat Creek Rec Center, beginning at 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM.
And Worth, can you talk about picking up the break? Can you talk about our little experience at First Landing Park on Sunday?
Sure. Sunday afternoon, Mayor Dyer and myself and some concerned citizens met at First Landing State Park. And a now freshman at Duke University, she started at Norfolk Academy, started a program. It's to clean up the beach. It's a national program. She brought it here, it's a Virginia Beach. Pick up a bucket, you spend five minutes picking up, it could be glass, paper, or plastic, and put it in a container and then it's removed later by, I don't know who removes it later, but it's a good, great program to encourage clean beaches.
Yeah, it's great to see, you know, the youth really have the passion and the initiative to do these types of things. Okay.
One last thing I forgot. We have a young lady called Brianna Daniels. She's from Virginia Beach. She's the first black woman NASCAR pit crew. She's from Virginia Beach.
That's great.
National news.
Hey, thank you all, you know, very much for a productive afternoon today. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exceptions of the open meeting showed by 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussions, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of the specific public officers, appointments, and employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A1. Appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Malusi.
Aye.
Commissioner Headley.
Aye.
Commissioner Riss.
Aye.
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 Get the folder.
Okay, folks, let me ask, do we need, we've been in the chairs for four hours. Do we need a short break?